Guys, thank you so much for being here tonight. Today is August the 3rd, 2021. We're gonna have our board meeting tonight. I want to thank all of you for being here tonight. Our thought for today is the ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in a moment of comfort and convenience, but where he stands in the time of challenging controversy. That's by Dr. Martin Luther King. I'm officially calling this meeting to order tonight. I'm gonna ask the birthday man himself, Commissioner Henderson, if he would lead us in prayer tonight. But before he does, I want to ask Mr. Kerr if he want to tell us about firefighters. So I want to ask Commissioner Henderson to pray for them tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, unfortunately, the two firefighters from Station One were involved in a serious accident just a little while ago. They were on their way to a call. A car pulled out in front of them. Unfortunately, they T-boned a car at an intersection and they pushed the car several hundred yards. Both the car and the truck left the road. The fire engine flipped over and the two firefighters... There was no deaths, thank the Lord, but all the members, the people who were in the car and the firefighters were all had to go to the hospital. Our firefighters are at Walton County Hospital, Piedmont Walton. They have a Level Two Trauma Center. And both of the firefighters were bouncing around the inside of the cab of the truck and there was a self-contained breathing apparatus that came loose and evidently hit one of the firefighters in the head. And so they wanted to bring them there to make sure that they gave them, went through and did all of the appropriate screenings and so forth to make sure they were okay. Fire Chief told me that he thought and they thought they would be released sometime later on tonight and that he would give me a call as soon as he had any other updates. So we want to make sure that we remember those two in our prayers. And I believe it was Engineer Shepherd and firefighter Busby were the two individuals involved.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Henderson, if you would lead us in prayer and following that, Commissioner Sanders, if you will lead us in our pledge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're going to bow to his. Dear Father, we come to thee with just a little broken heart about what has happened to our beloved firefighters. And we ask that you hold them and protect them. And all those whom were in the accident, my Father, we know that you are good God. We know you're one that looks over us all day and even at night while we rest. And we hoping that everyone will be just alright. And we just thank you, my Father. We thank you. We thank you for just being God, my Father, all by himself. And we thank you for your will. We just thank you. This we pray in our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. At this time, we're gonna, we got a couple of changes that we need to make to the agenda. Nine G. Nine G, we need to make that. Ten B. Need to make that ten B. Nine G, we need to make that ten B. And also, we need to, ten C, we need to make that, the mass ordinance re-implacement. Mass ordinance re-implacement. Ten C. I think that's everything. Our commissioners, with that, those changes, I seek a motion, please? It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Cowan. End of discussion. All in favor? Passed at five zero. Thank you so much. Next is citizens' comments. This opportunity that we allow citizens to come up and make comments about agenda topics only. Agenda topics only. You have three minutes to do so. It must be about agenda topics. You may come at this time. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. You want me to comment? Thank you. Citizen comments are closed. Next, we have the chairman's report. I'm excited tonight to have with us... I got a call from one of the commissioners who talked about this young lady who risked her life to save someone's life. And we wanted to recognize her tonight. Kaylee, thank you for being here tonight. If you would, yes, please come on up, if you would. Yep. Kaylin Harper. I'm sorry. Keelin. Keelin Harper. Keelin. Oh, it's two Kaylins. Oh, it's Keelin. Keelin Harper. Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you, ma'am, for being here tonight. Again, we're gonna, I'm gonna let Commissioner Edwards say a few things, but we greatly appreciate you and what you did. That was, that's amazing. I did get a chance to look at the story on Fox Five and we greatly appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Keelin, several weeks ago, for those of you that don't know, Keelin ran across an accident, I believe it was out in, out in District One, part of the county, and stayed with a lady that had been trapped within a car for a while until rescue emergency personnel could arrive and sat there with the lady and was able to comfort the lady and, at the risk of her own life, actually pulled her out of the car at the risk of her own life. So we just want to take this opportunity to say thank you to my cousin, number one. And one of our District One representatives, we're very, very proud of you and you mean so much to us and thank you very much.
We got something we want to give you. Make sure we thank her. Guys, also, in the chairman's report, as we do know, we're celebrating our 200 year, our bicentennial, and we do have an awards team. I want to bring up our award teams tonight. Latonya Hump, if you would, please come on up. Ms. Bethany. Beth. Beth. There she goes. If you would please come on up. And Ms. Cherie, if you would come on up. You guys are gonna be giving out special awards. You want to tell us a little bit about it? Tell the commissioners how they actually can be a part of as well as the community?
Absolutely. So, good evening, commissioners. We have our, of course, our 200 year anniversary this year, which is actually gonna take place on Christmas Eve, December 24th. So as a committee, the bicentennial committee came together to decide on an awards committee to actually award citizens and businesses of Newton County. I have, of course, Ms. Cherie from our Fire Services. We have Beth from Finance. We also have Bethany from Human Resources and myself. And I couldn't have asked for a better team. They have come to me and given us valuable input. They wanted to make sure that all of the districts are represented. So when we're giving out awards, the awards that are gonna be granted are based on citizens. This is specifically for citizens nominating citizens, businesses, organizations within Newton County. So there is gonna be an opportunity for everyone to either be nominated and/or recognized. We have several different types of awards that we're looking for. The promotion of it is actually gonna start by probably Thursday of this week. We want to promote it for a week and then after we promote it, on our website, our Facebook pages, as well as we're trying to get media, our media team involved, we're also gonna start the nomination process. And some of the awards that we have listed, just so that you guys are aware of how inclusive these awards are, we are going to start, we do have a One Newton Award. We have a Matt Cooper Award. We actually have an oldest living person born in Newton County, which will kind of push us to reach out to our seniors as well as the different convalescent homes within Newton County. Oldest living resident in Newton County. We have a nonprofit award. We have our chairman's award. We have a philanthropy award, religious organization award, and we're doing that based on district because we know that Newton County is so large that it would be difficult to actually have one award for a religious organization. So we thought it would be a great idea to have one nominated for one, District Two, District Three, Four, and Five. We have a standing ovation award. We have a Justin White Leadership Award, First Class Service Award. So we will have this information put on our website. We will also have this information put on our Facebook pages. And we want to make sure that it is known throughout Newton County that anyone can be nominated and from the nominations come the votes. And all of the votes are being tallied through a system. They are not being done by individuals. We were the group to come together to make sure that people are able to be recognized because sometimes we don't know everyone, but the county and the citizens know what works best for us as a county. So everyone will be able to have an opportunity to be nominated and from the nominations, we go to the voting process. Once the votes are tallied, then of course the awards, the winners will be announced. And towards the end of the year, we are planning to have a gala of an event in December. So at that gala, we're actually going to actually give the physical award to the recipients or to the winners. So please definitely reach out to myself, reach out to Beth, reach out to Cherie, and if you have any questions, and definitely look on our website and look on our Facebook page for information. And Brian is working with us. He's gonna make sure that the link is available and all of the nominations are gonna be done. If you notice up here, they have it here, there's a celebration, but there's a link where you can actually go into the nomination process to kind of get that going. Beth or Cherie, anything, okay? Before I end it, anybody have any questions?
I want to make sure that we get this, they get the information sent out to commissioners so they can put it on their social media and make sure we get...
Absolutely. We do want to make sure that our commissioners are highly involved. Make sure that you share it throughout your different districts to make sure all of the citizens are aware of it and have an opportunity to either participate themselves or share the information for nominations. Again, this is, this is not just us. This is us making it available, but this is for the citizens to recognize who they think should be honored in this 200 year anniversary.
Thank you so much. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, I have a couple of present awards that I would like to present. I'd like to ask Katie Bigley as well as Cindy Wyman, if you would come up, please. While they're doing that, I'd like to give a little background. I want to give them each a certificate of exemplary service and tell you a little bit about why. A few weeks ago, former Commissioner Nancy Schultz came home and there was a bat in her house, which happens to a lot of folks, but what a lot of people don't know is that bats can be very dangerous because they are typical carriers of rabies. And a bat bite can be so small and so delicate that you may not even know that you've been bitten. Now, what made this particular incident so, I guess, peculiar was that at the time she was, had her son and her daughter-in-law, who was pregnant, were visiting. So she didn't know what to do, so she called Cindy to find out, what do we do? And Cindy and Katie immediately came over to try to find the bat, to catch the bat. And obviously, they were pretty upset. And Nancy went on to explain how well that they came and calmed the family down because immediately the protocol is that everybody in the house has to go and begin taking rabies shots, which is a very painful treatment. So unfortunately, they weren't originally able to find the bat, but they did find where they thought the bat came in. But they did make contact with the hospital and helped arrange for the family to go ahead and begin their first round of rabies shots. In the meantime, they called another private animal control service that came over and set up some things and they were able to catch the bat. Then Cindy and Katie came back over to pick up the bat and take it to the Wildlife Resources, who determined, did a determination, found out, lo and behold, the bat did not have rabies. And so they only had to go through the, only had to go through the one series of shots. But Ms. Schultz and her family were so thankful for the way that they were treated, for the immediacy and all of the reaction from our Animal Services and the way in which she and her family were treated and calmed because it was a very stressful situation with her daughter being pregnant and not knowing what the effects would be and all. So I wanted to, wanted to, she would ask for them to be recognized and once she told me about it, I thought it was worthy of doing so. So I'm gonna present these plaques to both Katie and Cindy. These read, "In grateful recognition and appreciation for your enduring commitment to exceptional customer service, with compassion and for going above and beyond in time of need, thank you for your dedication to the citizens of Newton County and Animal Service." Caitlin K. Bigley, Animal Service. Thank you, Caitlin. Thank you very much. And Cindy Wyman. Thank you for you guys. Do you all, the commissioners, if you're coming out, be able to get this down here? We get that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. That's all you have? That's everything? Guys, I seek a motion that we approve the consent agenda, please. It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. End of discussion? All in favor? Passed at five zero. Thank you so much. Next is item number 10. Board discussion consideration, public works requesting approval to purchase right-of-way and easement at Snapping Shoals Creek Bridge Replacement Project at Brown Bridge Road. Cost nineteen thousand, six hundred. Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. These easements and the purchase of this right-of-way is in preparation for construction of the project to, for the new bridge at Snapping Shoals. This is being funded by Federal Highway Administration grant that we received as well as 2017 SPOS. Our transportation engineer, Chester Clay, is here tonight to answer questions if you have any questions regarding that.
Thank you. Any questions, commissioners? I seek a motion, please. Any questions, commissioners? No? I seek a motion, please. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Henderson. End of discussion? All in favor? Passed at five zero. Thank you, Chester.
Thank you.
Next is item ten B, which is GSI request approval of the Upper Oak Pony Watershed Risk Map. Mr. Kerr?
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. FEMA is proposing some revisions to our firm maps, the flood insurance rate maps in Newton County, and it's only a portion of Newton County. And this is purely an informational item for you because there will be some advertisements and so forth. And so our GIS department wanted to bring it to your attention. Scott Sirockin is here and will brief you on this and have some maps in front of us here as well as some slides for you to look at to explain where the, what the subject area is. So thank you, Scott.
Thank you for being here tonight, Scott.
Thank you all for having me. Before I start, I just want to ask, I shoot a moth out of my house the other week. Is that... Probably not. So as Lloyd said, FEMA is proposing to revise flood maps in the area that's shown on this map. The squares represent physical maps, so those are the only places where in this round they'll be making revisions. So that's District One and District Five. But I think the information we'll share with you tonight should be of interest to all the districts because eventually FEMA will visit other areas of the county. We don't know when that will be, but it will happen eventually. So the first question I think most people are gonna ask when they hear about revising the maps is, how does that affect my property? And FEMA has made it pretty easy to find that out. They've provided us the maps that Lloyd was referring to. There's copies behind me. We can also send PDFs of this to anyone who's interested. But what FEMA did was take the existing flood maps, the new flood maps, and compare them. The vast majority of properties did not change. If they're in the flood plain, the regulated flood plain now, they'll stay there. If they're not, they'll remain outside. But for about 50 or so properties, they did change. Either they were not in and now they are, or they were not, they were in and now they're not. Now, these maps don't show property lines, so if anyone's interested in seeing a specific property, GIS can certainly help you find where that property is and see if anything has changed for that. In terms of the process, this shows the broad steps we've already done, the first two or three that are up there. We've received the data. Staff has reviewed it. We did not see anything that was concerning. We did ask FEMA to go back and look at the Stanton Springs Industrial Park because they use some older topography data and there's been quite a bit of development in that area in recent years. So we thought it might warrant a second look, but most likely, nothing significant will change. Maybe nothing will change at all, but we're still waiting for them to come back with that kind of re-review of that specific area. Once that's done, there'll be an open house for the public. This will be hosted by FEMA and the Georgia Department of Natural Resources. That'll be an opportunity for people to ask questions, to see these maps and other information as well. Once that is done, that starts a 90-day period where the individual property owners can file an appeal. And you can appeal just because you don't like what the maps show, but if you have new information or you think there was an actual mistake in the engineering work that was done, those are grounds for an appeal. Once the appeals are resolved, FEMA will declare the maps ready to go. They'll issue a letter of final determination. That starts a six-month period in which the county will need to update any ordinance that's... I'm a little unsure, I'm asking for some clarification, whether the state handles that or it's our responsibility. Either way, those notices will go out well in advance of the open house. In terms of what effects we anticipate within the county, the big question really is, are there any structures that are going to be affected in terms of they're not in the regulated floodplain now, but they might be later? Because it's that regulated floodplain where insurance can be required and insurance can be somewhat expensive. So if you look at this table under the SFHA, which is Special Flood Hazard Area, which is another way of saying the regulated floodplain, then you look at the column that says newly added, you'll see a zero. So right now, we don't anticipate any structures being added to the regulated area, which is good news for our property owners. In terms of just acreage, just to give you kind of a sense of the scale and scope, again, looking under the Special Flood Hazard Area on the left side there, you could see overall currently in the effective mapping, there's about seventeen hundred acres in the regulated floodplain. Under the new maps, thirty new acres will be added and about sixteen will actually be removed. Those thirty acres that will be added, that spread over twenty-nine properties in the bulk of the acreage, about twenty-two acres is one property. So most properties, a very small amount of acreage is being added. That's all the information. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those. My contact information is there if anyone has questions later. The link is to a DNR page they've set up. BOH stands for Virtual Open House. So it's just a site they've set up, not specifically for Newton County, but you know, the Upper Oak Pony Watershed is much more than Newton. So it's for any jurisdiction going through this process. But there's a lot of good information there, so it's a good place to start if you just have general questions about the process. And then, like I said, if anyone has questions about their property specifically and how it might be affected, that's a good time to contact the GIS department.
Commissioner Edwards. Speak into the microphone, please.
How about now? How about now?
There you go.
Anyway, something's wrong with it, I'm not sure.
That's a good question. So I can't talk to any specific property, but general reasons why they do these revisions are better data becomes available. So we have new topography data, as I mentioned. There can be changes in environmental conditions. We may have more, you know, each floodplain is based on a rain event. And so as we, as the years go by, we get more and more rain data. And so that helps to tweak the floodplains a little bit. And then development, as it occurs, either upstream or even downstream from a particular property, that can affect the floodplain and change the boundaries. Now, none of the changes are significant. We're not talking about a floodplain growing dozens of feet, but there can be small variations. And that's just, even if we didn't get better data, just naturally floodplains can contract and expand over time.
My understanding from the chairman is we're not voting, we're just getting, it's just a discussion item tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Scott, for being here. Thank you so much. Thank you. Next is item 10C, reinstating our mask ordinance. I don't know if Mr. Kerr or Ms. Martin want to tackle that one, but guys, I know we have had a influx of cases. And so we want to make sure we do what we can to protect our employees. Well, I can't.
I think we did skip one, Ms. Chairman, number eleven.
We haven't got that yet.
Copy, I've got, I'm sorry.
10C, we have amended the agenda to add the mask ordinance back on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, yes, I'm sorry. My apologies. Due to the rising number of COVID cases with the variant, the new variant, currently there's about thirty-six percent of this county that have received vaccinations. We thought it was prudent to look at reinstating the mask mandate inside of the county buildings. And until we see what is happening with the trends, it appears that there are, the infection rates are going up, thankfully, the vaccination rates are also going up. And hopefully that will curtail and begin to send the infection rates down. But for the time being, we thought it best to go back to the mask requirements and then also to encourage the social distancing in all of our buildings that we had in place up until just a couple of months ago. So at this time, we'd like to ask then that we reinstate that until, and we would put December 31st as the end date on it if things do improve, which we hope that and expect that they probably will before then. But we would put that as the end date for the time being. And if things do improve before then, then we can always rescind the mandate.
Thank you, sir, Ms. Martin.
And I know that Lloyd, you and I have been talking about the CDC, like watching what the CDC says about all of this. And I did look at the paper over the weekend, and they are now suggesting that we wear our mask inside even if you are vaccinated. So I'll continue to keep you all updated on what I see come out from the CDC as well. But I think we'll have more information that at least in the next few days is what they were promising. So we'll know what we're supposed to do three days from now and see how it all changes.
And we did receive an email this morning. We didn't get the follow-up email, but we did get an email from, over from the courthouse, from one of the assistants over there, saying that the judge was going to write out an order. But that order never did come through. That order never did come through email form. So is that correct, LaTanya? I didn't check my email. Okay. So that order never did come through as a finished product, but they did say they was going to sign an order to enforce it. So I want to let the commissioners know that. Me personally, I think it's the right thing to do, and I'm going to call for a motion. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. But I mean, and it's good that we are asking everybody to wear masks, that's a protective measure. But I think what's more important, you know, and I maybe have had more tragedy in my family from the COVID, who's up here around his horseshoe, it's about getting the vaccine. Now, we used to be the older people, now it's the younger people and the people who are not taking their vaccine. From my understanding, it's about eighty-six percent of the people who are getting real sick and possibly facing death is the people who have not took their vaccine. And I'm going to say this, and I'm going to shut up. Some people say, if I take the vaccine, they're going to be tracking me. I told them, I said, if you got a social number, you're already being tracked. So don't worry about being tracked. Worry about saving your mother's life, your brother's, your cousin's, and people that we know and love from COVID, which is something we can't see, we can't hear, we can't smell. But it's something that's killing a lot of people here in our community. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? I seek a motion, please. It's been motion by Commissioner Sanders and second by Commissioner Mason. Any more discussion? Commissioner Edwards.
I think we're just recommencing the ordinance that we had put in place, and then we thought it was all gone. Now, we're going back to the same thing with the exemptions. Well, no, I was just sidebarring with the chairman. The EEOC has came up with a guidance that says that we can, as an employer, we can say, you have to take a vaccine. So we certainly can say you have to wear a mask. I know it offends many people, but their EEOC guidance was issued in this last month on that. I would have to look at the eighteen again, Commissioner Edwards, but I think they were all health-related conditions, right? Yeah. They were things, if someone has a legitimate reason for not being able to wear a mask, we would participate in an interactive dialogue, just like it was a disability. And they provide evidence that they have a health condition that they can't wear the mask, then fine, they don't wear the mask. Yes, there are religious exemptions available as well. And the way I would recommend handling those would be working through HR or anybody that does not want to wear a mask at work. And I'll be happy to help Amanda with anything she needs for me to drum up document-wise or anything like that. But it seems more like a personnel function on the employee's side of things.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. The pass is four to one. Next is item number eleven, Tax Successes Office Requesting Approval of Refund for Aronia Street Light Fees Paid by Leigh Anne Mokowski in the amount of a hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty-eight cents per tax year two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. This citizen was billed erroneously for streetlight service. Evidently, there was a mistake that was made in billing her along with the people, I believe it was on Oak Hill Circle. And so we're simply asking to be able to refund that money to her.
Thank you, sir. You said Oak Hill Circle?
Yes. She lives on Oak Hill Road, but I believe her, this was attached to her bill. She was also billed for this, but, and she should not have been.
Okay. Commissioner Mason?
Will you actually vote on it?
Yeah, you can make a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So I'd like to actually make a motion that we approve the Tax Successes Office Request, approval of the refund for Aronia Street Light fees paid by Leigh Anne Mokowski in the amount of a hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty-eight cents for the tax year of two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, and two thousand and twenty.
Thank you. It's been motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I guess the question that I'm asking is, this was attached to a tax bill? Or was it just a regular bill that went out to her?
It was to a tax bill.
Okay, so she just, she paid her taxes, she was paying for the license and everything. Thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor? Thank you, the pass is five to zero. Next, Mr. Kerr had asked that this item be tabled into governmental agreement between Newton County, Georgia, and the City of Covington for maintenance improvements and operation for Sandy's Dog Park within Chimney Park. You want to update us, or you just?
No, I just wanted to say that this item, was asked to table this item after it was placed on the agenda. And so we're simply asking that it be tabled until September seventh.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a motion, please? Thank you, sir. It's been motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Edwards that we tabled this item until September the seventh, I think. Is that the seventh? Yep. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Five to zero, tabled. Next is item thirteen, Resolution Zero Six Zero One Two One, a resolution by the Board of Commissioners of Newton County to abandon public right-of-way in a portion of FFA Camp Road. This was tabled back in June first, at the June first meeting. Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. This resolution is to abandon a portion of the road that is, leads into the FFA camp. As you'll recall, we entered into an agreement with the FFA camp to build a turnaround and a new guardhouse on the FFA road, and then agreed to, with them, to abandon that road to the FFA camp. That portion from the guardhouse down to where it leads into the FFA camp. And so this was, it was tabled, I believe, at the request of Commissioner Edwards. And now, until tonight, and so now it's back on the agenda, we simply ask that you approve this resolution to abandon the right-of-way.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Edwards?
Is it appropriate to ask questions now?
Make the motion and then get it onto the floor for discussion.
Well, if I make a motion right now, I'm going to make a motion to deny. So I'll make a motion to deny abandonment of that portion of FFA Camp Road tabled, that we tabled on the BOC June first, 2021 meeting.
Now you can discuss, there's a motion on the table, so you all may discuss and comment.
We got a second. We don't have a second. You want to deny?
I want to understand. Well, is there a second?
No, we don't have a second yet. Can I get a second, please? Yeah, we can't discuss until we get a second. Can I get a second, please? Okay. It's a motion and second. Discussion, please.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So...
No, I, I just wanted to say that, um, this item, um, was asked to table this item after it was placed on the agenda. Um, and so we're simply asking that it be tabled until September seventh.
Thank you, sir. Can I get, can I get a motion, please? Thank you, sir. It's been motion, um, by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Edwards. That we tabled this item until September, um, the seventh, I think. Is that the seventh?
Yep.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Five to zero, tabled. Next is item thirteen, uh, resolution zero six zero one two one. A resolution by the Board of Commissioners of Newton County. To them, to abandon public right-of-way in a portion, in a portion of FFA camp road. This was tabled back in June first, at the June first meeting. Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Um, this resolution is to abandon a portion of the road that is, leads into the FFA camp. As you'll recall, um, we entered into an agreement with the FFA camp to build a, um, turnaround and a new, um, uh, guardhouse, um, on the FFA road. And then agreed to, um, with them to, uh, abandon that road, uh, to the FFA camp. Um, that portion from the guardhouse, uh, down, um, to where it leads into the, uh, FFA camp. Um, and so this was, um, it was, uh, tabled, I believe, at the request of Commissioner Edwards. Uh, and now, um, uh, until tonight, and so now it's back on the agenda. We simply ask that you approve, um, this resolution to abandon the right-of-way.
Thank you, sir. Um, Commissioner Edwards.
Is it appropriate to ask questions now?
Make the motion and then get it onto the floor for discussion.
Well, if I make a motion right now, I'm gonna make a motion to deny. So I'll make a motion to deny abandonment of that portion of FFA camp road, uh, tabled, that, that we tabled on the BLC, June first, twenty twenty-one meeting.
Now you can discuss, there's a motion on the table, so you all may discuss and comment.
We got a second. We don't have a second. You? You wanna deny?
I wanna understand. Well, is there a second?
No, we don't have a second yet. Can I get a second, please? Yeah, we can't discuss until we get a second. Can I get a second, please? Okay. It's a motion and second, um, discussion, please.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So. I, I wanna understand why, I've never understood why we're, we're, we want to abandon the road. We, we worked with them to build a guard shack and move the guard shack back and build a roundabout. And I'm, I wanna understand why we now want to abandon the road when we've, when we, when we've had limited maintenance on it. It's forever, I mean.
Well, they are currently closing the road to public access. And, um, want to be able to close the road off to public access. Um, and we have done maintenance on that road. Um, and the reason we wanna close it is because, uh, because of the fact that they wanna, or the reason we wanna abandon it, is because they wanna close it to public access. And, and again, that's the whole reason why they wanted to put the new guardhouse there and to have the turnaround. So that they could keep the, so that they could close it to public access. Um, and since it would no longer be a public road, then we would have, we would no longer have any, um, cause to do maintenance on the road, because it's not open to the public.
But do they have the ability to actually close the road? Because there's a, there's a pull-around of the, the arms, correct?
If they man, yes, there's a, um, but they man the guard station and they could stop the public from going in there, yes. And they have to do that, is my understanding.
I think it's for, uh, security reasons as well, because I know they worked on something with the sheriff department to, um, man that guard, that guard station. Uh, and I think that was done for security reasons, if I'm not mistaken.
Right, I mean, I, I think it, it makes sense that they would wanna close it, because they do have summer camps for kids down there and they don't want people coming in and out that they don't know who they are. But if it's a public road and we maintain, if it's a road that we maintain, then the public should have access to it. And come and go as they please. Um, and if it's, but if it's, doesn't have public access, then we should know, should not be maintaining that road. And the whole, uh, agreement was to begin with, was that we would build the guard shack. We would build the roundabout and then we would abandon the road to the FFA. And, or State Department of Education, I think, is actually who owns the FFA camp. But we would abandon it to them and then they would take care of it forevermore. Um, and that, they would then be permitted to close the road down whenever they wanted, open it up whenever they wanted. Um, and they could control access, uh, ingress and egress to the camp and to the, um, uh, center down there, that the, um, uh, horse center, the ag center down there that they use for all that. But that at least was what the, um, was what was intended to begin with when we first started the whole project. Um, so.
All right, so, so, Mr. Chairman, I guess there'll be a procedural issue here, um. So this particular motion is to deny, um, can I withdraw that motion?
Yeah, we have a second, yeah. Yeah, we do have a. Yeah.
Do we have to vote it down first?
Yeah. So. So I can call for the vote and, you know, you guys can let it, let that fail if that's what your intentions are. So, so guys, let's, let's do this. I'm gonna call for the motion, let the motion fail if you don't wanna, if you don't wanna pass. Um, and then you can present a motion. Wait a second, already.
What is the substitute motion? You're saying for approval? Okay.
Okay, all right. Make your, make your motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a substitute motion to approve.
Okay. Can, there's a, a substitute motion on the floor to approve. Can I get a second, please? It has been second. Any more discussion? Uh, Commissioner Edwards.
My apologies for the confusion. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Anyone else? All in favor? Thank you, you're passing five oh. Item number fourteen, Board of Commissioners' consideration of resolution R zero eight zero three two one. A resolution in the opposition to the im- imposition of the additional dollar fee by the Newton County Tax Commissioner for tax collection, collection services performed on behalf of the municipalities in Newton County, Georgia, Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. It was brought to my attention by, um, City of Oxford and City of Port Adele that they had received a letter from the Tax Commissioner's Office indicating the, that, um, there would be an additional dollar collected by the Tax Commissioner for, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. And, um, the Board of Commissioners had never had discussion of that or never had any consideration of that. Um, and also the City of Covington also called me about that particular issue. Um, so, um, they, they were concerned because, um, there was never a concern about the two dollars and a half that the Tax Commissioner collects, uh, as his, is his right to collect that. Um, and they never had a question about that, but there was a question about the additional dollar. Um, because the cities had not budgeted for that. And, um, so they did not want to, to pay that. And since the board had never considered it, um, I thought it best to bring it to your attention. Um, my thought was is that, uh, the board would, since it'd never been discussed or talked about, was not interested in it. Uh, in doing so, um, and so I had requested that the county attorney draw up a resolution in opposition to that. Um, and so that's what you have before you here is, is a letter, or rather, a resolution, um, in opposition to the collection of that additional dollar, um, per, um, parcel or tax bill. Um, so that's what you see before you. And certainly if the board, uh, wants to collect that extra dollar, um, you know, you certainly have the prerogative to do that. But again, it's never been discussed, never been thought of, and, um, and, um, but it was out there, the letter was out there, sent on your behalf without your knowledge. Um, and I believe this is appropriate thing to do.
Thank you, sir. Um. You, you, you can come up. Got our, uh, Tax Commissioner, uh, Marcus Jordan here. Tonight, you wanna address the board, sir?
Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, I'd like to thank you for having me here. If, if I may, there was a, an actual law in the law that actually addressed it. Can I, can I, can I?
You can bring it to me.
Thank you, sir. Get him, I, I give everyone a few seconds to read the law. Uh, and the law is, is forty-eight, five, three fifty-nine point one. And it discusses the actual contract between Tax Commissioner and, and the cities. And. You have, you have a little more? Me, how many more you need?
I have a little more.
Uh.
Two more. Three.
I, I could out, cut a second, to read that, that law itself, or, or to have, read it aloud. Uh, and again, I'd be hard persevering the law for my mother, let alone anyone else. Uh, so I think the action that you're doing is the best way to do, to remedy. But I could not do it myself because of the way the law is written. And that's where I'm at with this.
I'm sorry, could you say that again? I apologize.
I just, just reading the statute, the way the law is written. Uh, and, and it, it, it was six that says that the, the municipalities have to reimburse the county for, for the cost in, in, in the short version, uh, and the way the law is written, so. And I, again, like I said, I'm not gonna be hard persevering law for my mother, let alone you guys. So it, I think this, this right here is the best remedy, is for you all to enact the resolution. So therefore, if assistance comes, and asked me a question about it, it was voted on by the Commissioners and, and this is the result of that resolution. And so it covers, it covers us all. Mr. Martin.
This has been the tax that has never been imposed before by a previous Tax Commissioner. And in looking at the statute you brought before, it, it doesn't say shall, it says may. That you, you may impose that, that fee for your services. And as a constitutional officer, you absolutely can impose that fee. The resolution before the board tonight, it's not, not saying you can't. It's saying that the board doesn't support taxing the people the additional dollars.
I, I, well, what I'm saying, this resolution is the best thing that I need to, to go and address. So if someone questions me about it, I'm like, oh, it was voted on. I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you all, but I think for me, the best way to cover myself is this resolution.
Thank you, sir. Um, Commissioner, any questions? Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Chairman. I, I guess the question that I have, that the, uh, Tax Commissioner already has the ability to add this additional fee onto, onto the, um, I guess, to tax it from, uh, from the cities. So. Does he have, he, he don't have to, other words, he don't have to come in and doing what, what he's doing and saying, well, well, maybe you need to do a resolution. It's something that you can enact yourself if you chose to. Am I? I'm, I'm just asking, I'm trying to find out.
Uh, well, actually, the, the way the law is, we're, we're under fifty thousand parfa. So I could have, I could easily have a contract agreement with the cities and not even have it in the government. But since we're at that threshold, what I'm trying to do, as a leader, you look forward. You look forward and, and thinking, because we're gonna get, reach that fifty, that fifty thousand threshold before the end of this term. So I'd rather have this in a government agreement already in place, so you won't have to come back to us. So, and, and then that's, and that's my whole reason for developing my process. There was not a uniform agreement, so I wanted a uniform agreement one time. And then I wanted to actually make sure that going forward, we're already in place. Again, this, this resolution is something that I need to cover myself. So I'm, I'm not against it, nor, I mean, whatever way you all choose, choose the side, only.
Mr. Martin.
Commissioner Henderson, the, um, he is a constitutional officer, so he gets the right to set compensation and, and he can make this fee. Um, the resolution that's before you tonight, um, Mr. Kerr had instructed me to draft a resolution in opposition to adding one dollar to the two dollars and fifty cent per parcel fee that the cities are already paying. So it's the board saying, we don't want to tax people more. We're individual municipality parcels more.
We're not taxing people, it's, it's, you're not gonna be, you're not gonna charge the city for, for us providing the service.
Okay, you, you're already providing the service at two dollars and fifty cents per parcel, correct?
But I'm saying, you, you're not gonna charge the city. But you, you, you said taxing people, we're not taxing people. This, this, this is going to the citizens. I mean, this is going back to the municipality, to the county. So the county is basically turning down the ability to collect money for the services we provide, which is fine.
Right, now.
I think you all are taking, thinking more, too much into it.
No, we're, no, we've received multiple calls from the cities saying, I mean, we, we have cities that owe us substantial money currently, for example. Saying that they do not want this one dollar imposition. We've expressed to them as a constitutional officer, that is your, that is your decision to make, not this board's decision to make. So.
Yeah, I think, I think you all are taking, taking too much into it. Again, I support the issue, if, if, I don't think I need this resolution saying that you are an opposition of paying, or having the city pay you all for, for me providing the service. That, that's all I'm saying. So if that's what you all wanna do, that's fine. I just want something in public record, so if assistance comes to me, I can say, oh, it was voted on, this, this is what the Commissioners decide.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thanks for being here. Again, um, Mr. Martin, can you explain to the board, um, exactly what we got to get?
Um, before you is a resolution in opposition to the imposition of an additional one dollar fee by the Newton County Tax Commissioner for tax collection services performed on behalf of the cities in Newton County. Um, our resolution here cites the same law that the Tax Commissioner can implement that. That has not occurred in the past, it's always been two dollars and fifty cents in the past. Now it will be three dollars and fifty cents with that additional one dollar fee. And that's per individual parcels, or so the individual bill accounts. Um, I know that you've spoken with Matt Pepper, I've spoken to Covington. So there has been some, some significant discussions within municipalities saying, why? Why the additional dollar?
So in, in, in layman's terms, the board has the right to vote it up or vote it down, is that correct?
On this, this is a resolution in opposition, so you, right, there is no request right now, because he is a constitutional officer. This is more of a piece of propaganda that comes from the board saying that we don't, we don't support charging our cities anymore. So we're not saying yes or no on what Marcus, um, excuse me, Tax Commissioner Jordan can do, because he can set fees.
So if the board says, um, we don't wanna support this, then what's the outcome?
The outcome is that Mr. Jordan gets to make his decision on what he wants to do. The board gives him the feedback as to their thoughts on imposing additional fees on municipalities. Um, so this is much like the resolution in opposition we did to those design standards a couple of years back. Um, so it, it's a piece of local, you know, resolution to say, you oppose it. You may not oppose it. I just drafted it as directed, so, yeah, that's totally up to y'all.
Mr. Kerr.
I, I, I can tell you from speaking to the other city managers, that their impression is, is that the county is attempting to collect additional taxes from them. That the county board is attempting to collect an additional dollar tax from them, and that's why I, I, you know, based on our conversation.
The board is not.
Right, and this is telling them that the board is not interested in collecting this additional dollar. And based on the conversations that we've had about taxation and so forth, that's why I asked the county attorney to draft this, the manner in which I asked her to draft it. Um, because of the opposition that has been expressed in that vein. Um, and, I mean, it, it, it clearly said that the, and it had nothing to do with what the, um, Tax Commissioner has the, the right and to do, which is to collect the two dollars and a half. But the, the question was, you know, put to me, why all of a sudden is, are we having to pay three dollars and a half per parcel instead of two dollars and a half? Why does the county need that extra dollar? Why are they taxing? So that is the way that they are viewing it. And again, based on the conversations that we've had, um, one, um, the dollar amount that would be, the amount of revenue, if you will, that would be generated from that, would be insignificant in our total budget. Because the, while it still would be, yes, dollars, there's only forty-seven thousand parcels within the city or within the total county. And if you break those out into the individual cities, you're not talking about a significant sums. However, to a town, a city like, uh, Oxford, that has a very small budget, if you added a dollar to every one of those fee, that, to every one of their parcels, three or four thousand dollars is a significant sum, or to Mansfield, or to New Bern. So. so I thought it, I believed it was important to, for, for the, for us to address this issue.
I got a couple of questions, I got, uh, Commissioner Sanders, I got Commissioner Cowan, and then Commissioner Martin.
Martin is a kind of a two-part question, I don't know if Commissioner Jordan has to answer it. Uh, what is the, uh, reason for the increase? Is it, and also, how long have we been charging the two fifty?
I believe that the tax commissioner's office has been charging that fee for a number of years. I mean, that, and that's sta, that's a standard fee that's according to the, and that, that's been done according to the state legislation. And there's never been an argument about that, I mean, that's a pretty standard fee. Never been any argument, the cities are well aware, it's been done for a long time, it's done statewide. So there's never been any argument about that. It was this, this surprise in this additional dollar that they, um, they thought that the board was imposing, that the board of commissioners was imposing on them.
So are there any counties that have?
I don't know, I mean. Yeah, I'm sure there probably are, but, um.
You wanna?
So, yeah, if you can answer that.
That, that, that's gonna be all of this. Uh, yes, those fees, other counties do, some, uh, there are counties that do collect those fees. Uh, again, once I got to looking at the statute, I, and the stat, the statute actually states that. So I, I felt a lot of problems, I had to put it in there. Again, I'm, I'm, I'm not against you all to buy and collecting things. I just wanna make sure that you all are agreed it. And therefore, if a citizen come, or a newspaper come and ask me, well, why are we not collecting these fees? I can say, the board voted that they do not want to charge those services.
So, Commissioner, uh, Cowan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Megan, help me out with this a little bit. Uh, my understanding of contract law, a change in that amount is a material change. Substan, changing the do, amount you're collecting. And it says here that you may contract with the cities and municipalities. Have you done an individual contract with each one? Have y'all discussed it?
We, each, each one.
Any of recent agreement?
Actually, he has a law contract that each one has.
He has a great I G A.
I wanted a uniform contract, because previous administration, they had, you had different contracts for different cities.
Okay. But, but you've gained, uh, consent from the, all the cities to accept this extra dollar?
Uh, uh, actually, I have, I have yet to receive the actual contract stuff. Now, again.
Okay, but you can't unilaterally sign a contract. You can't just make a contract just because you want to.
Right, right.
You got, this right here provides that you have to work with the parties. But, do you understand that?
I, I've read his I G A, it's well-written, the, it's, he's inserted in there where it says that it, there'll be the imposition of the one dollar fee, and that's only like two sentences, that's the, the two dollars and fifty cent fee. But it is a, a contract, so if we make a material change, they, you know, the city of Oxford could say, no.
One party can't change a contract.
You have to have a bargain for exchange.
One party can't change a contract.
Right.
And you can't, you can't unilaterally change a contract. And then it says now, it says, any contract authorized by the subsection between the county governing authority, which is us, and municipality shall specify an amount be paid by municipality to the county, which would substantially approximate the cost of county providing the service to the municipality. So I'm assuming that contract, that you, the way I understand this, and tell me if I'm wrong, I would say that it would have to be a contract between you and the cities that would have to be ratified by this board before it could be implemented. Do you understand that? Same way?
I don't.
It doesn't use the word ratification, but it says, um, between the county governing authority shall specify an amount. So it sounds like the county governing authority, which is this board, has to have some approval on this contract.
That's right. That, that's once we reach the fifty thousand parcel.
You got it.
We, we have not reached that, right, right now, I could just go in and just do a contract with the cities and be done. Or I could just tell the city, I don't wanna collect for you all, and be done. So, that, definitely, all the thing I'm trying to do right now is go ahead and have an intergovernmental contract going forward, because I know we're gonna reach that fifty thousand parcel count sometime within, within this, uh, these four years. So therefore, I don't have to come back to you. So if you all agree, oh, I don't, we, we don't wanna take that, uh, that dollar fee, so we can go, we can move forward, because I got something I can base, base anything off of, it's like, oh, well, we're the previous board, like his hours. All, all the thing that we may have to do is get a new board in, they may wanna, well, why aren't you charging the city? See, that'd be a whole other issue.
Well, I'm in favor of one contract that has the terms in it. But again, there has to be a one-on-one bargain for exchange between the two parties. Um, I'm not exactly sure what language here means. If it doesn't mean a ratification, it doesn't use the word ratification, but it seems like there has to be some sort of assent by the county board to his contract.
Again, uh, I, again, I, I think, you're beating the rap over here. Well, really, really, I don't think I need you all to say, look, we, we don't wanna charge that dollar fee. Uh, and I'm fine with it, I can move forward. But, I mean, uh, uh, because if you're not, if you all vote to say, hey, we, we don't wanna charge the cities the dollar, I'm fine with it. Only the only thing I'm saying is, if I get a citizen coming to me and asking me, why are you not, why are the, why are the cities not paying the county for, for the services that you provide? I can say, we have the county commissioners vote against it.
Uh, thank you. Yeah.
But, but, but you already, they're already paying two fifty?
Yes.
They're just not paying three fifty?
They're just not paying the dollar fee, which is dollar fee, if you read into that, how that statute is written, it, it does say that the, the municipality should, should, should reimburse the county for services at minimum cost. But what that number is, who knows?
Uh, well, the state of Georgia's never been good at writing law.
Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So what is the two fifty actually for? Is that not a reimbursement for the services provided to each municipality?
That, that two fifty is, is, is for them paying, they're paying the, the tax commissioner this fee for providing the services.
Correct, so they're, so currently, we're getting reimbursed for the services we're providing to the municipalities through the two dollars and fifty cents.
Who are you talking about?
Meaning the tax commissioner's office.
The, the tax commissioner does get, gets paid a fee, two dollars and fifty cents for the.
Correct.
And I always have, they've been doing it ever since, I know, back to Cal, we have, so.
Correct. So I'm just trying to get clarification, because you said the additional dollar was for reimbursement. But also, the two fifty is for reimbursement as well, correct?
No. The two fifty is the fee that we charge for providing the service.
Okay.
The, the dollar is for additional cost, the cost for providing the service going back to the county.
Okay. Okay. So.
No, no different than, we pay two and a half percent commi, the, the school board pays us two and a half percent commissions for us collecting for the student. So the dollars is, is the same concept.
Okay. So really, at this particular point, because we haven't reached a specific level of parcels, really, this particular matter, this board shouldn't engage in until we reach whatever that particular amount of parcels is, is that correct?
Completely up to y'all, I, I wouldn't look at it that way. I mean, I would look at it from the, whether or not you are in agreement that the cities are going to pay an extra dollar in addition to their two fifty or not. And then, at the end of the day, though, again, you've got a constitutional officer who gets to make his decision.
Right.
Um, this was a piece put together to say that, no, we don't want to, we want to let the tax commissioner know that we don't support that endeavor. But he can, he has, as a constitutional officer, he can do it.
Yeah, I mean, again, I could, I, I could.
He's written, he has written intergovernmental agreements, I've seen them, because the city attorneys have sent them. Having an I G A between him. Right, they have not executed them. He didn't do that. He, he's written I G As and he has sent them out to the municipalities, that's what caused the telephone calls to come out. So this new I G A looks very much like the old one that said two dollars and fifty cents and just has a new provision for the dollar. So if it, it's a new I G A, but it's an additional dollar. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, there is, it's, it, it has the line right there for the mayor of each cities, and they've all received it. I mean, I've, I've read it, it.
So Megan, does, does this money go back into the general fund?
No, because the tax commissioner's office.
To that, oh.
Again, I can either just tell the cities I don't wanna collect.
Yeah.
And be done with it. And just, just do my constitutional duties and collect for the county and the school board.
But I, I, I think if you feel that it's necessary, is it, um, would it be appropriate to, I think like Commissioner Cowan was saying, having those individual conversations with each municipality and state, hey, I've sent you this I G A, I think this additional dollar will be to reimburse for, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. This is what it's for, and you, as the constitutional officer, get that commitment from each municipality and allow them to agree to the I G A that you've already sent to them without incorporating this board into the contractual agreement that you have set with each municipality.
Their only other option is, if they agree, if they don't agree, then it, it's gonna cost them more to have a third party to come in and collect the taxes for than being for, if the state is like.
Okay.
Only thing I, I need you all to do is just say that you, you don't, you don't wanna accept the dollar fee and you're ready for it to stay the way it was.
Okay.
But I, I just need something, something on, on the, in the public record to state that. But I, it's not for me to, I could easily put zero in there, but I don't think I would do, if you all just, because if future board could come and say, why are you not collecting those services for us? So, again, I'm, I'm trying to cover myself.
But even if we did, you still have the right as a constitutional officer to go back to those municipalities and actually recoup, recoup that dollar, correct? Or do you have to go back to that original contractual agreement and have that rewrite, written?
Uh, I mean, right now, the contract reads dollar fee. If y'all are willing to just vote and say, we don't want it, then I, I will just ignore the dollar. Because I, or I can go back in and, and change it to zero, just based on that. But that, that is something I'll sit with legal to find out the best way to do it. I, uh, that, that's not a question at, at hand, and, and, yeah. Yeah, yeah. I mean, I'm not gonna do anything, no, no different than others.
Uh, Commissioner Henderson, then Commissioner Cowan.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. But this has been a very, uh, 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 unique year for me. And, um, and I, I understand, you know, and like I said, if you want, if you want to, it's within your power, the same as it is in, in any constitutional office. Sheriff can, can see fit to spend his money the way he wants to, once we give it to him through the, through our budget. And so is all the rest of the constitutional office, so, you know, you have that discretion within your office, and that's the way it should be. I, but, you know, I, I, I believe this, this amount of personnel over years, uh, but I think it's been there twenty-three years. It's saying two fifty. And like you said, you just put them, put in your file, whatever you want to do, and said, this is what the board did a resolution that I could comply with if I want to, but I don't have to.
Uh, Commissioner Cowan.
Uh, Mr. Jordan, you mentioned that there was a lawsuit with Gwinnett County right now on this, on this issue? Uh, Megan, could you check on that? Uh, okay. Wouldn't it behoove us to wait till the outcome of that?
Let, let, let me state this, we have, we have yet at least the fifty thousand, or parcel count. Again, I could do anything I, I choose to do right now, so, so we don't have, we have at least the fifty thousand parcel.
Well, my question is, wouldn't it make more sense to wait until the outcome of that? Um, court case is done, so we have some clarity on what, I'm not sure what this means, because I could read it two or three different ways. Um, and just allow you to just continue doing as you're doing, because you've already got the consent of the cities on those contracts without adding in additional fees. You can collect that until we get the resolution of the court case. Then we should have some clarity of what that, what this statute means.
Well, well, that, you're saying, to continue to go on the way you.
The two fifty. Two fifty without the, the extra dollar fee.
I guess that's something that you all could go ahead and vote on the resolution. That's the only way I, I'm gonna do that, if, if.
Okay.
Thank you, uh, thank you, sir, thank you for being here.
And you'll be able to go over what you're voting on. You were voting on a resolution in opposition, so if you are, you, you believe that the tax commissioner should move forward with the dollar, you would vote no on this, this resolution. Because this is, we are saying a resolution in opposition. So if you are opposed to that dollar, you are a yes vote on the resolution. Does that make sense? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think, I think I'm. I, I think a motion, please.
Uh, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, uh, might, like, might like to make a resolution to approve resolution, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution. R zero eight zero three two one, a resolution in opposition to imposition of an additional dollar fee by the Newton County Tax Commissioner for Tax Collection Services performed on behalf of municipalities in Newton County, Georgia.
Can I get a second, please? It's a motion by Commissioner Edwards, and second by Commissioner Cowan, and it is more district. All in favor? All opposed? Thank you, pass, pass three two. Item fifteen, resolution R zero eight zero three two one eight, resolution regarding the Newton County Board of Commissioners' interaction with the county officers and employees who are subject to the direction of, and supervision of the county manager. Uh, Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this resolution has to do basically restating, reiterating, um, the tenets of the form of government. And that is, um, that my position as county manager is to handle all of the operations and to interface with the, with the county employees. There are often many times when, um, I know that the board has contacted directly, uh, many of the employees, and it does, um, uh, having, the contact should always be done through my, through me, uh, as opposed to going directly to the county employees. Unfortunately, many of the employees are easily intimidated, and, and while I know you don't mean to be intimidating, um, sometimes it, it does come across that way to them. And, um, so this, this resolution reinforces, uh, the, the county manager form of government. Um, and, uh, there's also a lot of times when, when an employee may agree to something, uh, that, um, they don't necessarily, uh, have the, one, the authority to agree to, or they may not know that there's some other plan in action. Uh, so, uh, in reading, in, 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 so what I'm gonna do is just read through this, um, re, this resolution, and it spells out really what, where I'm trying to go with this. And I would simply ask that you honor this as a part of the, um, as a part of the county form of, form of government, and have any inquiries sent to me, and then I'll deal directly with the, directly with the employees. Um, whereas the Constitution stated Georgia approved by the voters in state, uh, November of nineteen eighty-two, and effective July one, nineteen eighty- uh, November of nineteen eighty-two and effective July one nineteen eighty-three provides an article nine, uh, Article Nine, Section Two, Paragraph One thereof, governing authority of the county may adopt clearly reasonable ordinances, resolutions, and regulations. And whereas in two thousand sixteen, the Newton County Board of Commissioners adopted a new form of government, commonly referred to as a commission manager form of government. Under this structure, the Board of Commissioners fills a primary policymaking role and oversees the effect, the executive functions of Newton County, but assigns day-to-day duties of operations roles solely to the county manager. And whereas the county manager is granted substantial authority over Newton County's operations and is solely responsible for managing those employees, fulfilling their day-to-day duties as part of Newton County's operations. And whereas Board of Commissioners and individual commissioners shall deal with county officers and employees who are subject to the direction and supervision of the county manager solely through the county manager and neither the Board of Commissioners nor any member of the Board of Commissioners shall give orders to any such officer or employer, excuse me, employee either publicly or privately. And whereas Board of Commissioners shall exercise its power in session duly assembled and no member or group of members thereof shall otherwise attempt to contact, instruct, or otherwise advise or attempt to persuade officers and employees who are subject to the direction and supervision of the county manager. Now, therefore, here, it is hereby resolved that Board of Commissioners and individual commissioners shall deal with county officers and employees who are subject to the direct, uh, to, are subject to the direction and supervision of the county manager solely through the county manager. So approved, third day, this third day of August, twenty twenty-one. And so that lays, that lays out, uh, what this resolution is asking, is asking for. Again, uh, this is stated fairly clearly in the form of government. Um, what the intention here is to play out or rather to reinforce what was intended in the form of government. And that is a clear separation between the commissioners who are policymakers and, um, deal with all of the politics in the county and the operations of the county, which has been, um, vested, uh, solely in my authority. And, um, so we, there, there have been occasions where, uh, quite frankly, I think that there's been, um, maybe a few things where there, there's been some issues. And so I think it best, uh, to simply remind everybody and, um, that, um, that anything related to operations, uh, would need to go through me. So, I, I appreciate your, uh, consideration of this and, and as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, Commissioner Sanders.
The only issue I have with that resolution is it kind of goes against enabling legislation. Because as the states do manage and supervise the county staff and department heads with exception of employees of other elected county officials and Board of Taxation, including the following. If, if a commissioner is here to serve the public and they need to converse with an employee or whatever, they should be able to do so. And you know, I always pop you on every email anyway. But they should be able to do so. That limits a commissioner from being able to speak to anyone. I mean, nobody should use their power. They should never do that because against that's against our code of conduct. Use their power. But that stops the commissioner from even talking to anybody in the county or asking any questions. And what's gonna happen is that employee is gonna utilize that against that commissioner.
Well, I think, but also what has happened is, again, going back to, um, some of our employees have felt intimidated by that, uh, by the fact that they've had direct contact with, by the commissioners having direct contact with them. And so in order to alleviate that, um, it's best that you direct your inquiries to me and then I will, uh, talk with the employees, get the information from the employees.
Uh, Commissioner Mason. I'm, uh, Commissioner Henderson, I'm sorry.
Don't tell me Commissioner Mason out of favor. Hey, that's all right. Oh, I, I, without calling names, I, I'm just somewhat curious. I mean, I mean, what has been said? I mean, who, okay, because I haven't talked to nobody. I mean, if I see, I'm just talking about me. If I see a county employee and, you know, I might say, you need a soda or something, you ain't working it hot sun. Hey, you know, and this or that, and I just go on. And if I may finish. And part of the time, most of the employees, especially the older ones, I already know. So, I'm not gonna be trying to tell them what to do because, you know, if, if I'm seeing them and talking to them, they're probably already doing what I, uh, you know, worked through the county manager, uh, you know, to do. So, no, I'm talking, but, um, I'm just curious. Are they, even if the commission was coming to tell the county employee or something, that don't make he or she do it. Because it's, it's, you know, it's supposed to be upon the, uh, county manager. Having said that, and when, when I was listening to you, so that means that the chairman couldn't sugge, suggest anything to any, at any employee that he have to go straight to the county manager in order to get something. I, I guess that this is a form of a question.
Well, I, I, you know, if it hadn't been, if, if this hadn't been brought to my attention by some of the employees, um, and, and I, but I also think that there have been occasions where some lines have been crossed. And I feel like it's best to address it, uh, before it gets before we have any more. And I, I think it's, it's best for all, um, you know, again, um, the commission's role is that of policymaker. And my role is, is, is that of operations. Um, and I think it's, it's, uh, you know, best if we, if we handle it uh, in that way. And sometimes it's just very subtle. Um, and again, uh, you know, the, the employees kind of look at you all as, as, um, you know, very special people that have a tremendous amount of power, which you do.
About that. But I hope you look, looking for me as being a friend. But, um, I have one last question.
And, and, you know, whether that's, uh, whether it's the, the type of power they, they ascribe to you all, whether it's real or imagined, I, I, you know, I, I, I can't say, but, uh, regardless of that, um, uh, I, I think it's best if we, I believe it's best if we follow this because we would be following our, our own form of government and.
You're right. You're right, Lord. And, uh, one last follow-up question and directing this to the county attorney. On the, now I hear so much about home rule. On the home rule, could we count on somewhat, how could we, if the majority of the board or, or the, um, uh, four commissioners at the very least, wanted somehow modify that? Could, could it be done? Yes. Could we do it on the home rule?
Under home rule, what are you seeking to change? You want to seek it? I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure I know your question.
I, I just, you know, I, I just think that, um, that at the very least, whomever is the vice chair should have a, a possible role and possibly the chairman have a little more role in being able to talk to the, uh, county employees, the one that's under the Board of Commissioners. I know the sheriff, officer sheriff, I know that the tax commissioner is not, but the ones who are under, under us. You know, and, and sometimes, you know, it's, um, it's a, it's, it's, we are more of the policymakers. I understand that. But I think sometimes you should be able to converse with them, at least some, one person or possibly two people if some live on the board.
I, and I think you're absolutely correct. And in drafting this resolution, I made sure to say it was only the employees that would report to Lloyd. So, um, when you hire your in-house county attorney, that person supports this board. And there, but there are other executive level positions that, that Mr. Kerr would not be run as a part of the day-to-day operations of the business. You know, Lloyd's got rec. If, you know, if you have questions about recreation, go to Lloyd. Lloyd can set up a meeting with Dwayne. I think that's what this is seeking, is involvement of the county manager so that employees are not feeling pressed upon to make a decision based upon your leadership. But that, that's my, just my background from writing, yes.
I, I'll be too. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. One last follow-up question. So, if, if I were to call and say, well, you know, you're working on, on a park in my community and where are we at with it? Then I would have to kiss Lloyd. He's on vacation. He got called to ask the same question going around a loop. I'm saying, well, what with, with the, uh, this, this park or what are we doing in the community?
This, this resolution does not address what would happen in that scenario.
Um, I got Commissioner, um, Edwards, Commissioner Mason, and then Commissioner Sanders. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Laura, you're, you're absolutely right. Uh, the integrity of the chain of command is paramount in terms of our, especially our form of government. I worked in corporate America for thirty, thirty-four years and uh, nothing undermines a leader's ability to lead more than uh, an employee or, uh, someone underneath that particular manager thinking he has more than one boss. And, uh, uh, I, I believe this, this resolution could probably be called a stand resolution, right? Because over the years, when I've come to you, I've, I've, uh, the employees, you instructed the employees to reply to me and, and come and give me an explanation. And then I've got their phone number, right? So, at that point, I just, next time I have an issue, I pick them up and call, I pick that number up and, and pick the phone up and just call them. So, it got quite easy. So, for that, I apologize. And, um, I'm, I'm the, one of the more guilty, if not the only guilty, the guilty person of this whole deal. And, uh, when the time is right, I'll make the motion to approve this resolution, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry. Okay. Um, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I think there should be some amendments to this. Um, at a minimum, I think the Board of Commissioners should be able to reach out to the directors of any department, um, and not necessarily have to go through our county manager at no disrespect. Um, now, I believe that our county manager should be aware of that. I know me personally, uh, I get a lot of questions about zoning, planning, recreation. And so for me, um, I will reach out to those directors of those areas directly. Uh, and I will copy our county manager and I'll copy our chairman on those emails. And so I think at a minimum, uh, the Board of Commissioners should be able to have some level of communication with the directors of each department, um, and just ensure that we loop our county manager in to what's going on. And I think that should be at a minimal. So, I don't think it should be where the county commissioners don't have at least any communication with the physical departments, because what I've seen in the past, I have actually been, I've gone to the county manager and I've been redirected to the director for answers. So, my thing is, if there is a specific subject matter that our county manager isn't aware of, let us go directly to that director, loop him in, and we all learn at the same time. So, I think at a minimum, we should be able to go to the director. So, I would like to see that, uh, in that form of government change where we at least go to the directors at a minimum. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Commissioner Sanders.
Well, my, uh, comment on this is that the ena, the enabling legislation already states that, so we don't need a resolution. It already is stated in detail, that information. And everyone knows I'm an upfront person. I don't sugarcoat anything. If there's an issue that a director has with a commissioner, have that conversation before you put something in order, because we don't know who did what up here. We're just like in a, I know I'm in the law. If there's a commission up here that they felt like their authority was, uh, utilized or threatened, go to that commission of first before putting something in that's gonna really go against our enabling legislation, which we have been doing here in this county so long. I look at the enabling legislation, there's another document that goes to supersede that. That's ridiculous. So, why don't we just go to that commission or whomever it may be? Talk to them and say, hey, this person feels threatened. If you don't have that conversation, don't just peace out conversation. The conversation has never been had. Why put a resolution in place when you never had the conversation with the person that may be in question? Because right now, I think all of us is like, who is it? Who, who, who are you talking about? Speak, speak on it. I'm an upfront person. If it's me, tell me and I'll make sure I have that conversation. If it's anybody here, say who it is.
Um. I think it was, yeah, okay. Um, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, uh, Megan, our, uh, the form of government, that enabling leg, legislation, what does it say in regards to, um, county operations? Being that, that broad of a term, county operations?
Operations on a day-to-day basis fall under the county manager in our form of government.
Okay. So, thank you, Miss, thank you, Megan. So, what we're asked, being asked to consider tonight, um, is, is not changing the enabling legislation or the county form of government. It's just reiterating it. So, if we do anything other than that, it's gonna change the county, county, um, we're gonna be changing the county's enabling legislation and county form of government.
I don't know that I necessarily agree with that. I think and Lloyd, you may speak more about the, the purpose of it. I, I don't think it's meant to change the form of government legislation. It's, you know, an employee feeling put on the spot by a commissioner saying, you know, there's this area of land here and I'd like to do X, Y, Z, or I've heard, it, those types of things. But that, that's what we're trying to avoid. Is, is, is that fair to say, Lloyd? Yeah.
But, but it's just reinforcing the county form of government. Right? This, this resolution?
Yes, sir. It is consistent with our form of government.
And if we do anything else other than vote yes on this, it's gonna, we're, we're changing the county form of government.
You, under home rule, you couldn't change this. It would be void.
So, that would have to be in a form of a resolution too.
Yep.
Commissioner Sanders.
And agreeing or iterating with, uh, Commissioner Edwards is really no need for, because the state already approved this. It has been approved by legislation in the state on our, how our government is formed. We don't even need to have anything reiterated. It is written in a document. Anybody on here can pull it off the website or Google it and from the state, it has already been approved by our representation. It makes no sense to even have an, another document.
So, guys, so, so what, so what we're gonna do, we're gonna, um, axile our county attorney. Uh, there's two documents out there, uh, Megan. Um, due to board need to go through the county manager right now to have communication with the employees. That's, that's a yes or, that's, I mean.
That's a, that's a no. We don't have that in our form of government. It doesn't say you can't go to employees in that form of government.
Uh, uh, to support this resolution, to support the resolution.
The, it does support the resolution in saying that we are a county manager form of government and that he is in charge of day-to-day duties. I mean, I pulled that straight from our form of government.
Okay.
So, um, yes, it is consistent with the form of government. It's not gonna change the form of government. It's a resolution to stop interference or other unwanted communications or you know, those things that, that, that would occur with a county employee. And Lloyd, you can give examples better than I can. I don't know what.
What was the answer to your, to the chairman's question?
We, we, we really, honestly, guys, I think we kind of, uh, and I'm just gonna be honest with you. I think we're kind of beating around the bush. I think it's kind of cut and dry. Can the, the Board of Commissioners have, um, communication for giving directives and things with the county employees? I think Mr. Kerr is asking that we eliminate that. He's saying that some of that been going on and it's causing some issues. So, we need to know, um, is this, can we support this? Is this resolution, uh, supported by the form of government? And if it is, we need to know that it is. If it's not, then we need to know that it's not.
It is supported by the form of government. The form of government is just not going to say, you know, some of this language that I have added in here about who reports to him. It, it's, so this is supplementing, but it is. It, it, so this is supplementing, but it is consistent with your form of government. I took a paragraph straight from your form of government for the resolution.
So Mr. Kerr is, uh, correct in his action tonight?
Yes, I believe so.
Guys, guys, yeah, y'all having a sidebar conversation, but this is important because it's taking a long time. Again, so Mr. Kerr is in, is correct, um, or what he's asking for tonight?
Yes, he is in charge of day-to-day operations. The chain of command for employees reporting to Lloyd Kerr should start with Lloyd Kerr. That doesn't change who the employees are of this board, like the clerk, like the county attorney, that don't fall under Lloyd. Um, but Lloyd's employees, which is the vast majority of county employees, the form of government says that he is in charge of the day-to-day operations. The day-to-day operations include our employees. Um, this is consistent with the form of government. I don't know what else to say other than we've read it, we've talked about it. It's consistent with the form of government. It's apparent that there's been some issues of some kind where, um, there's been interference, and I use the word interference loosely, and the county manager is wishing to establish or re-establish or remind of his authority over his employees and to ask you to come to him first before going to the employee. And he may do, just like what Commissioner Mason said. You know what, Commissioner Mason? I'm not sure if they went with the Tanna compactor or the John Deere compactor. Why don't you call Kevin Walter, he can tell you. You know, that's, they're, you know, that, that's a perfectly fine thing that, that Lloyd may say in that scenario, but he needs to be the first person.
I need to know, I need to be the first contact so that I can channel it in the correct place and I can answer where, uh, so that I can give the answer that's appropriate. I may not want you talking, I may not want a commissioner talking to a particular, uh, employee because I know that that employee tends to get either too excited or would give them the wrong information. I need to know what they want to know first. Um, and that's my job. I mean, I, no, you're right, I don't know everything and I may, uh, ask somebody to respond to you, but that's my prerogative and that's my responsibility. It's my responsibility to tell the employees how to do their job, nobody else's responsibility but mine. It's my responsibility to get the information for you and if I pass it on to somebody else, again, that's my prerogative. But, um, and, you know, the, these, these folks report to me, they don't not, they do not report to you all. They report to me. Uh, that's the, 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 um, the line in the sand there is operation on, operations on one side, policy on the other. That's where it is.
Thank you. Com- no, Commissioner, um, Henderson.
Well, I, I, I'm still trying to, I guess, I won't say debate, but I'm still trying to figure out. I think that, um, uh, Commissioner Mason made a, a very point. He said, what's wrong if him contacting the head of the department and asking a particular question? It's not, it's not, it's not law in your standards and not reporting to you. He's just simply asking a question. What's wrong with, uh, Commissioner Edwards asking a particular question to the, the head of the department? Who may not think in both of their cases, what I heard, uh, that you told, you already given him the, the number. So what's wrong with that? I mean, how is that affecting all, or, or they feel intimidated because he said, well, Commissioner Mason said, well, hey, my skate, a park, say, uh, uh, when might y'all be gonna complete it or something? And he may call the wing, say, what is it, the wing? The wing, say, hey, it's gonna be completed, uh, say, about next week. I don't see anything wrong and, and sometime, you know, I'm gonna be very candid. Lloyd, you're kinda hard to get a hold to sometimes. And since I can't do a whole lot of email, you know, uh, um, uh, and so, you know, it's, it's kinda hard. And I don't see what, if, if I was telling him, say, well, you got to do soon, 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 so I can understand what you're saying, but just by simply asking a question to an employee or something like that, that you know on a project that's in your district, there should be no reason why you can't ask that question. That shouldn't be even a reason why the chairman shouldn't ask anybody a question, anywhere on the board because it, 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 it shouldn't be just limited to one person. It should, as I said earlier, it should be, uh, limited to at least, uh, the board asks a simple question, the chairman if he wishes to ask several questions. And there shouldn't be a debate on that at all. And maybe it would take a, a, a somewhat of an en- in a la- enabling legislation, uh, to do it, uh, whatever. But I think we're gonna have to, it needs to be addressed. And I think when you get, so you can't afraid to talk to somebody about what's going in your district, you have to wait and wait and wait. And for an example, I'm gonna shut up. At the point where we at now on the baseball field, I'm like, this, this about two and a half years behind, in my opinion, behind schedule. And why couldn't I ask somebody, say, what's going on? They said, well, you got to get the city and county together. So I had to get this city folks together, along with the county people together, and ask them something. But, you know, we communicated with Lloyd and they all came together and said, what's what? And so now he's moving and that's good, but, uh, I think we shouldn't, we shouldn't root it out. And it will behoove you commissioners to root it out. Because the power of the Board of Commissioners dwindling and dwindling, dwindling. And to ask the person questions, and most of those employees, I consider to be my friends. You know, and I haven't asked them to do anything that I thought was unreasonable. I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, a- and of course, I'm, I'm sitting here reading the enabling legislation and I, and, and I, and I want our county manager to understand that, uh, this is not an attack, this is not, uh, any disrespect. I think it is, we have constituents that are expecting us to come through for them, uh, in a timely manner. Uh, and I think sometimes we have to jump through whatever hoops we need to, uh, to actually make that happen. And for me, I think, I think with, I guess, this resolution that was read is slightly different than what's in the enabling legislation. And so I think there needs to be an exception where, uh, if there is a commissioner that needs to reach out to a director at a director level, uh, I am an email person because I like paper trails. So including Lloyd on that email, I think that is sufficient because there is gonna be times where he may respond. I know over ninety-nine percent of the time, um, it will be that director that will respond. Uh, and if there is an issue with a specific commissioner being abrasive or, uh, rude or condescending or whatever that is, uh, I, I think that should be addressed on a case-by-case basis. But I think just eliminating any conversation with the director, uh, I cannot agree with that at all. I just cannot. Um, I think Lloyd should be included, I agree with that, and he should know what's going on. Uh, but I think to just say, no, you cannot reach out to a director. Uh, and so, and that's what I mean, I think there should be an exception to the rule. When we say employees, that means director level on down. So I think there just should be an exception to that rule, and that's all I'm asking. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So Megan, does the form of government support what Commissioner Mason was asking?
Our form of government does not say who can talk to who. That's not going to be in form of government. Uh, but it, it is consistent with our form of government for Lloyd to be in charge of operations and his employees. Um, a lot of what I'm hearing tonight makes me think that there is some wish to make changes to form of government because we keep coming back to that. Um, I, I'll tell you that can take ages to do, um, and I don't know that you want to undertake that. But under our form of government, Lloyd is the boss, the employer, what, whatever you wanna call him for our day-to-day operational folks. His, and he's asking that you come through him before speaking with his team. Um, I can certainly, if this, if y'all want to table this, let me come back with another paragraph that speaks directly to directors, um, that, I can do that. I just, I need the board to tell me what they want me to do, um, and that includes Mr. Kerr too. I mean, and you just tell me how you want this redrafted or if you simply want to vote it down. Um, I, I just need some guidance here on what it is if you want it.
Um, Commissioner Sanders. I know we're taking a lot of time on this particular topic. I think the, right, I said too much. I think the conversation before even a resolution needs to be had or anything. The conversation needs to be had with that various commissioner or commissioners, that there's an issue with that and, and maybe Lloyd can talk to that commissioner, maybe not accuse that employee, have that conversation before we put something in the set because it's, again, the conversations have never been had. You have five commissioners up in here trying to figure out, who are you talking about? We have no idea. Have the conversation first before anything is actually had, before we even put anything in place. I can't vote for that, I can't.
Uh, Commissioner, uh, Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I'd like to actually make a motion that we table Resolution R zero eight zero three two one A, um, which is a resolution re- uh, regarding the Newton County Board of Commissioners' interaction with county officers, employees who are subject to the direction and supervision of the county manager.
When would you like to tape it until? Do you want it September seventh?
Yes.
Okay.
September seventh.
Uh, Commissioner, uh, uh, Henderson.
Thank you. Um, i- is, is this including the fact that the, um, district commissioner would be able to talk to the supervisor?
Commissioner Mason. He tabling the whole thing, he taking, he taking the whole resolution. He tabling the whole resolution.
But when you table it, it has come back.
Yep.
I, I understand that. So I think when we were talking about asking the county attorney to add a, a sentence or something in it, would that be maybe possibly be included in it too, too as well?
Yes, I can bring back an amended version on September seventh to discuss, um, directors. And, um, I can get with Lloyd on that, on how he, what level of director because sometime, sometimes we have directors who, they're called a director, but not necessarily. I gue- maybe like department head or something like that.
And one last thing, you know, you know, it's, it's all right to do in resolution, but I don't think I could call you and, um, and ask for a resolution, you would actually do it for me. I would have to get maybe some type of permission or make sure that everybody knows what type of resolution that we're, that we're doing. And, and lastly, I understand that because you are our county attorney, and we love you, uh, there's also a cost attached to it. And it, there's a cost for every, uh, everybody on the board to do resolutions. Are we trying to cut a little bit of cost until we have an in-house attorney? Or we continue with this, just doing a resolution and stuff that, that possibly everybody might not do it? So since most of y'all get the email, could we make sure everybody get it? And I'm pretty sure somebody might pass it on to me and so that we could, uh, kinda look at and address it before we, uh, you know, put it on the agenda.
Well, um, Commissioner Henderson, since we are actually tabling this and, um, there need to be some changes in this resolution, um, per Commissioner Mason and, um, um, Commissioner Sanders. So it look like there's gonna have to be an email change, um, that is started with, with Megan and, and, uh, and Lloyd, uh, since we are entered into this gray area. So it's gonna have to be some communications going on, um, to actually get this going. So, uh, Megan?
Um, and please understand, um, Commissioner Henderson, um, after the resolution that was passed, that I cannot take assignments from commissioners, that I can only take my assignments from Lloyd and Marcelo and Ms. Jackie, that that limits highly what I can do. So please know I'm not excluding you ever.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. And just one, one, one final question, and this may be direct to Lloyd. How much does it cost to get the county attorney to do a resolution? What is the cost to the county?
Yeah, maybe a hundred and seventy-five dollars. Maybe a hundred and, about a hundred and seventy-five dollars.
How many resolution have we did this year?
What was the question about cost?
You wanna know how many, how much it costs to do a resolution, Megan says.
Oh, how much was the cost?
How many resolution have we did this year? It had a hundred and seventy-five, uh, what's the, the cost for resolution? Because as you just stated, the only people can do the resolution would be the account, uh, county manager, the chairman, or Ms. Jackie. So how many have we done this year?
To be honest with you, Commissioner, I don't really remember, but I could look, I could find out. I go back to the billing.
Yes, sir.
And see that I, I think it would-
Yes, sir.
It depends on the resolutions, how difficult it is, but I don't think, it may be, I don't know, one seventy, probably less than one, less than an hour's billing, I would think.
Okay, so it takes, it takes, um, our county attorney, Ms. Megan, an hour to do a resolution?
Um, usually it's less than an hour unless it's something really complicated, um, that I, that even then, an hour is a long time to spend on a resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we do have a, um, motion on the floor. Can I get a second, please? Yeah. It's been a motion by Commissioner Mason that we tabled, it's a second by Commissioner Henderson. Um, we had enough discussion, all in favor? Thank you. Stand table. Um, Resolution R zero eight zero three two one B, the resolution of the Newton County Board of Commissioners authorizing hunting and trapping of coyotes on certain county properties. Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Um, this is a resolution to allow Pat Campbell to continue trapping coyotes on property that is owned by the county that is adjacent to the county landfill on, uh, Lower River Road. Um, he has been doing this for us for the last three years, uh, and has helped to reduce the coyote population over there significantly. Um, the state does offer a bounty on the coyote furs and so, um, uh, this will allow him to continue for another year until August of, of next year. And so he also has helped to, um, his presence there has helped to keep trespassers off of that property. A lot of people wanna ride four-wheelers and whatnot over there and trespass and, uh, do damage to property. And so he has helped to keep those people off of there as well. So we'd like to ask that the board, uh, approve this, uh, once again and to allow him to continue, uh, trap, trapping those coyotes.
Thank you, sir. Take a motion, please, guys.
I make a motion to approve Resolution R zero eight zero three two one B, uh, to authorize hunting and trapping of coyotes on certain county properties.
Can I get a second, please? It's been motion by Commissioner Cowan and second by Commissioner, um, Edwards in a discussion. All in favor? Pass in five oh. Thank you. Uh, Resolution R, I'm sorry, res- Resolution R zero eight zero three two one C, a resolution of Newton County Board of Commissioners approving FY twenty twenty-two appropriations entities com- um, confer, conferring substantial benefit to the citizens of Newton County. Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Uh, this resolution, uh, is for the appropriations, um, that we provide support for in the community. And I will read, um, the text of this, this resolution. A resolution of the Newton County Board of Commissioners approving fiscal year twenty twenty-two appropriations to entities conferring substantial benefits to citizens of Newton County. Whereas the Constitution of the State- Whereas the Constitution of the State of Georgia approved by the voters of the state in November 1982 and effective July 1, 1983, provides in Article 9, Section 2, Paragraph 1 thereof, that the governing authority of the county may adopt clearly reasonable ordinances, resolutions, and regulations. And whereas Newton County, like all other county and municipal governments in Georgia, is limited by the state constitution and the Georgia Code in how public funds can be used, one of the principal restrictions is the gratuities clause of the Georgia Constitution. And whereas there is no gratuity or violation of the gratuities clause when Newton County receives a countywide substantial benefit in exchange for budget appropriation. And whereas the Newton County Board of Commissioners recognizes the substantial benefit of working with community partners and the worthy causes they pursue that are highly beneficial to the citizens of Newton County. And whereas the following entities appeared before the Newton County Board of Commissioners to seek budget appropriations for fiscal year 2022. Macintosh Trail ECD Council, Inc., Newton County Community Partnership, Nelson Heights Community Center, Newton County Board of Health, Washington Street Community Center, Newton County Library System, Viewpoint Health, Newton County IDA, Newton County DFAX, Alcove Casa, Inc., Highway 278 CID. Whereas the Newton County Board of Commissioners finds that the aforementioned entities confer countywide substantial benefits to the citizens of Newton County, and whereas the Newton County Board of Commissioners wishes to provide appropriations to the aforementioned entities as part of the fiscal year 2022 budget, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Newton County, Georgia as follows. One, the Newton County Board of Commissioner finds that the following, Board of Commissioners, excuse me, finds that the following entity services confer substantial benefit to Newton County citizens. Macintosh Trail ECD Council, Inc., Newton County Community Partnership, Nelson Heights Community Center, Newton County Board of Health, Washington Street Community Center, Newton County Library System, Viewpoint Health, Newton County IDA, Newton County DFAX, Newton, excuse me, Alcove Casa, Inc., Highway 278 CID. The Newton County Board of Commissioners hereby approves budget appropriations for fiscal year 2022 to the aforementioned entities providing community-wide services to the citizens of Newton County. So resolved this third day of August 2021, Newton County Board of Commissioners, Marcelo Baines, Chairman, and Tash Jackie Smith, County Clerk.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion, please. Thank you. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, sir.
Can I ask a question?
It's in motion and second. Discussion, please.
Okay, do we have a process in place for review of entities that come before the board? I know this is going to be, and Megan, you worked on something like that, I think.
I wrote it, yeah, I remember. It was like maybe six weeks ago. Was that fair?
So, the list that's on here that we approved now, this is, this is just a document for the current budget. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct. This is the third or fourth year, I think, that we've done this number.
And then subsequent to that, if there are other entities that show a substantial benefit to the county, they can bring that to you and to the county attorney for approval and in recommendations of board. Is that correct?
This is the same, like it's the external appropriations, Ms. B, Nelson Heights, the groups that we have long supported. They are supposed to come before the board. My understanding is they did come before the board during one of the budget meetings for their external appropriations, discussed what they did. And this, I did not draft this resolution, so I don't have it in front of me. But there needs to be a resolution in place that says that these entities are conferring substantial benefit on the citizens of Newton County. If we have entities that have not come before the board that are seeking external appropriations, that is not following the policy that we just put in place in the last two months.
Got you. So, this document is for getting our, to go along with our budget.
So, Lloyd, do we have any companies that have not gone before the board that are not listed? Yeah, I think we do. Right? So, all companies that are receiving funds from the government have come before the board?
Yes.
So, what about the fireworks company?
The who?
The fireworks company. Fireworks, the nonprofit, Fireworks, Inc. They have not come before the board, and they're a nonprofit.
They're not, they're not in appropriation. They were then, especially then.
But they are considered a nonprofit with the agreement that was written. So, they should have come before the board to receive funding.
The board did approve the expenditure.
No, they didn't. Was that why, maybe? We did not approve that expenditure with the nonprofit. No, we did not.
I don't know whether it was approved as a nonprofit, but it was, but the expenditure was approved.
It was approved in 2021. It did not come before the board. That was a discussion we had during the budget meeting. It did not come before the board.
I'm sorry.
And you told me this listed under events.
It was approved in the 2021, FY-21 budget in the special events line, in the line item in that budget.
So, in 2022, for the budget, they have to come before the board. Are they listed in the current budget that we're about to approve tonight?
In the line item as, in the line item as a special event. So, they would not, they would not come before the board. It's under special events.
So, is it itemized where the citizens know that they are paying this fee to this company? It's not on the website.
If they, if they go through the complete itemized budget, which is the 1,400-page version, the fireworks would be listed in there.
The fireworks of the act of company name.
I don't know whether, I don't.
So, that's what needs to be changed.
The request only lists, only lists fireworks. It does not mention the name of the group.
Commissioner Henderson. So, if I may suggest that you do, I guess, some type of research and report back to us and tell us what we need to do? If that being the case.
I think the, the external appropriations process that we've been doing, I think it, it works well, like Aunt Benny coming and presenting Nelson Heights.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it gives everybody an opportunity to meet the person who's doing the work and to talk about their work. Now, that, and I, I wasn't here for that budget hearing, but I've seen him do a great job before, so.
Commissioner Sanders. And I want to put this on record. This has nothing to do with the individual doing the fireworks. It has to do with the correct process. Anytime we're giving taxpayers dollars, the taxpayers need to know who we're paying to and what the purpose of, so they can see this done, not place it under a specific item that just says fireworks. It needs to be, and they need to go through the same process of every company, even when you're doing contracts with a company, you got to submit a bid. It needs to be done based on if the taxpayers know what is going on, because a lot of taxpayers did not know what's going on. It was even written in the paper.
That information could be found in the check register when we issue a check to the vendor, to that vendor who happens, he happens to be a 501, but that information is clear, just like every other check that we issue can be found in a check register. We put those, we put those out, I guess, weekly. Check register shows up on the, on the website weekly with all of the checks that we issue and who, the names of the companies that we issue to. So, it is out there and it is public. It's only in the budget where we put, we don't list the names of any company in the budget. We issue what the item is, but we don't, for instance, uniforms, we don't say that we buy them from Sentos or whoever, and there's a couple of other companies. We don't say Sentos. We say uniforms. So, but the information on how much we pay for the uniforms, the individual companies, which show up in the check register.
That's $10,000 substantial amount of money that the taxpayer need to know.
I'm not saying it's not. I'm just telling you, the information is there and it, and it is available. We're not hiding anything.
It's not the hiding portion of it, Lloyd, is that the taxpayers did not know because it was in the paper. They had no idea of this expense. So, that means that there's some lack of communication.
Understand, but the information is there. The taxpayers can find it. It's out there. It's available.
Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I just want to give a brief history, just since I've been on the board. I do know the gentleman that actually does the fireworks did come in 2019. It was placed on the agenda. It was voted on publicly last year in 2020. It was placed on the agenda. We did vote on it publicly. So, it was out there. I know for the past two years. And to my knowledge, the fireworks is not, and I, correct me if I'm incorrect, it's not considered an actual appropriation, so it's not following the same policy as an appropriation. It's a one-time event that we're donating to for the community, whereas appropriations, they have year-long community support or community programs that they're incorporating all year long versus a one-time event. Is that correct? Correct me if I'm incorrect.
Yes, sir, that's correct. It's, 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 they're considered, it's considered a special event, the fireworks are, and they're the vendor for that event.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanders.
Commissioner Mason says, so Keith, donate, and that they came in 2019, so why did they not come in 2021? And also, does that go against the gratuitous act? Because that was the reason why we rescind the funds for Juneteenth? Because based on, we rescinded the vote to not give the money for Juneteenth because it was based on gratuitous. So, what makes it different from that nonprofit that's providing fireworks service?
Well, for one thing, the Juneteenth event was not sponsored by the county. The fireworks were sponsored by the county. And the reason they didn't come in, was, I guess FY, or 2020, was because there was, well, it was going to be part of a budget. The, the fireworks were considered an event that was going to be continued by the county, and so was made part of the budget.
So, Lloyd, what happened to the funds that we gave them last year when we did not have fireworks? Should that have gone over to the next following year?
They were incorporated into another show that was done in this year, yeah.
So, we gave them basically $20,000 for the show this year? Because we didn't have fireworks in 2020.
That's my understanding, yes. He had, we had funds left over from last year, and so they put into this year.
Thank you, guys. There's a motion on the floor. It's been first, it's been motion and second, sorry. We had discussion. All in favor? All in favor? Thank you. Next on the agenda is item number 17. 18, I'm sorry, thank you. Resolution R-080321D, a resolution of the Newton County Board of Commissioners to adopt the annual budget for FY-2020. Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'd like to recognize all of the department heads and all of the elected officials who worked so diligently on this budget to put this budget together. I believe it's a very strong budget. And I think that we did a, a really good job of honoring the the revenue, the money that was given to us by the taxpayers and been good stewards. I particularly want to identify and recognize our finance director, Brittany White, because she put in the yeoman's effort on this budget and did a great job for us. So, I would like to say thank you for all your hard work, Brittany. I also would like to let everyone know that we are doing a significant reduction in our milled rate. Our current milled rate is, we are going from 12.9, 12.92 for M&amp;O to 11.14. So, that is a significant reduction this year in our milled rate. And that's a, I'm very proud of that number. And I think you all as a board should be very proud of that number as well. It's a significant reduction. This is the third year in a row that we've been able to reduce our milled rate. And hopefully, we will be able to continue on that. We anticipate that our LOST collections and our TAVT collections will continue to rise as they have over this past year. Our tax, our digest was up to $3.4 billion. That's almost half a billion more than it was last year. And so, things seem to be doing, moving quite well here in Newton County. We're very proud of that. So, we've got some good things going for us here, and we want to continue. So, what I'm going to do at this point is to read the resolution and, Mr. Chairman, and then we'll ask for a vote.
Thank you, sir. Can you give us that number one more time?
Yes, sir.
That is unheard of. That's unheard of. That's unheard of, yeah.
The, the milled rate will be, for the M&amp;O milled will be 11.145. And that is a reduction from 12.92. And our, our real property is And that is 424 million above last year. Things are getting really good in Newton County.
Yeah, wow, crazy. If you would, please read it.
Whereas, Section 3, Article 1, Chapter 81 of Title 36 of the Official Code of Georgia requires, among other things, that counties prepare and adopt a balanced budget annually. And whereas Newton County operates with a fiscal year that begins on July 1 and ends on June 30, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of Newton County has received a proposed fiscal year 2022 budget, which lists proposed expenditures, proposes certain levies and charges to finance such expenditures, and lists the anticipated revenues to be derived therefrom for the period beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022. And whereas the proposed fiscal year 2022 budget is balanced so that anticipated revenues and other financial resources for each fund equal the proposed expenditures or expenses. And whereas pursuant to notices published in accordance with OCGA 36815, public hearings were conducted on July 20, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. and on August 3, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. for the purpose of providing citizens and community interest groups an opportunity to present their views on the various aspects of the proposed budget. Now therefore be it, and it is hereby resolved, that the fiscal year 2022 budget, as shown in Exhibit A, which is attached here too and made a part hereof by reference, is hereby adopted. Be it further resolved that all items of revenues projected in this budget are hereby adopted and levied in the amounts anticipated. Be it further resolved that the amounts recommended in the budget for each fund as proposed expenditures are hereby appropriated to the departments, function, or purposes named. Be it further resolved that the amounts recommended in the budget for various maintenance and operating costs, transportation and road improvements, and all other capital expenditures for transportation and road improvements, and all other capital expenditures for all county departments, are hereby appropriated to the department's function or purposes named. Be it further resolved that the expenditures shall not exceed the appropriations authorized by this budget or any subsequent amendments thereto, and that expenditures for the fiscal year shall not exceed funding available. Be it further resolved that the Director of Finance CF, uh, excuse me, CFO, is authorized to amend the budget to reflect grant revenues and expenditures upon receipt of an unexecuted grant award document, intergovernmental agreement, or comparable documentation, only in such cases where as no match is required and the increase to revenues and expenditures is equal. Be it further resolved that the Director of Finance slash CFO is authorized to amend the budget with approval from the county manager to reflect the use of reserves for open encumbrances, purchases, or purchase orders and previously funded and approved projects or tasks that were delayed because of operational constraints. Be it so resolved this third day of August, twenty twenty-one, Newton County Board of Commissioners, Marcelo Baines, Chairman, attest Jackie Smith, Wolf County Clerk. Thank you.
Guys, that's a commotion. That is unheard of. Um, it's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I, and I guess this, my question is direct to the, uh, CFO? Certified Finance Officer. Um, the question is this. In a hundred thousand dollars home on this budget, how much would that individual might have to pay, uh, for, for asking?
Since we're, um, on the public notice that'll be advertised, we're taking a rollback rate. Well, we're actually taking less than the rollback rate. Because I think the rollback rate was right around eleven point five or so. So essentially, most taxpayers, I think we talked about this some last year, everybody's circumstances are different.
Yes, ma'am.
But there should be reductions, um, on people's taxes this year instead of increases.
Well, I, I understand that, but I'm, I'm just trying to get a, maybe a possible estimate as far as how much? Because if, if we're talking about five or ten dollars, then this really is no money. As far as, in my opinion, a reduction in their taxes. So the question was, and it's from, from my little small brain, was how much, uh, would the possible tax be for a hundred thousand dollar home in Newton County? Two hundred thousand dollars.
If you, um, if you want to give me a second, I have a spreadsheet that I can calculate that on.
Yes, ma'am.
Guys, hold on, hold on one second, hold on one second, guys. Brittany, you got it? Do you have it?
I do.
Guys, we're gonna take a, uh, a five-minute recess. Guys, we're gonna resume back in our, um, our regular board meeting. Um, it's Brittany.
Um, so I've calculated the tax decrease and it would be right around thirty-three dollars per two hundred thousand dollar home.
So what you're telling me is that I saved a thirty-three dollars? Some, in comparison to this year, this year to last year, I guess thirty-two dollars, thirty-three dollars less. Which is, thirty-three dollars is, is better than nothing. But, um, you know, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All in favor? All opposed? You want to state statewide?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The reason why I voted in extension, just to kind of explain myself. For, uh, years, in, in years, we've been talking about a tax cut. And, and we come up here and, and say, whoa, yeah, we saved you a whole lot of money. Well, I don't think thirty-three dollars per home is a whole lot of money. And I had, I had hoped for a real tax reduction. It's my understanding also that we, we, we recouped about eleven million dollars in back taxes of people who, who owe us taxes. And I don't know whether that was incorporated into the budget or, or whatever the case may be. Um, I don't think it's nothing good. I think if we, if there's gonna be a, a real tax reduction, I think we, we need to be working hard on what we're working now in order to give ourselves a break. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. It passes, um, three, one, one extension. Um, item number nineteen, board discussion consideration, one eight, one four, Quick Stop LLC. One eight, one four, Highway eleven, owner, Narza, Rayo, Roel, um, District One, alcohol license, first reader. Uh, next is citizen comments. This is an opportunity that will allow citizens to make comments about any topic. Um, you will have three minutes to do so. You will have three minutes to do so. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. You may come at this time.
Good evening. Uh, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Olinda, Olinda Ricard Hodge. Address, um, eighty Stillwaters Drive, Covington, Georgia. Um, I am joined today by concerned citizens, businesses, and nonprofit leaders with the support of the Georgia Economic Roundtable to highlight the provisions of President Biden's executive order on advancing racial equity and support for underserved communities through the federal government and request accountability for the funds allotted to Newton County from the American Rescue Plan. I read and paraphrase, President, Presidential Executive Order one three nine eight five on advancing racial equity and support for underserved communities through the federal government. Section one, policy, equal opportunity is the better of our Amer- American democracy and our diversity is one of our country's greatest strengths. But for, for too many, the American dream remains out of reach. Entrenched disparities in our laws and public policies and in our public and private institutions have often denied equal opportunity to individuals and communities. Our, uh, coun- country faces converging economic, health, and climate crises and have exposed and exacerbated inequalities while a historic movement for justice has highlighted the innumerable human cost of systemic racism. Our nation deserves an ambitious whole-of-government equality agenda that matches the scale of the opportunities and challenges that we face. It is therefore the policy of my administration that the federal government should pursue a comprehensive approach to advance equality for all, including people of color and others who have been historically underserved, marginalized, and adversely affected by persistent poverty and inequality. Affirmatively advancing equity, civil rights, and racial justice and equal opportunity is the responsibility of the whole of our government. Because advancing equity requires a systemic approach to embedding fairness in decision-making policy, uh, processes, I'm sorry. Executive departments and agencies must recognize and work to redress inequalities in their policies and programs that serve as barriers to equal opportunity. In continuing the reading, I paraphrase, in section one, by advancing, um, equity across federal government, we can create opportunities for the improvement of communities that have been historically underserved, which benefits everyone. For example, an al- analysis shows that closing racial gaps in wages, housing credit, lending opportunities, and access to higher education would amount to an additional five trillion in gross domestic product in the American economy over the next five years. The federal government's goal in advancing equality is to provide everyone with the opportunity to reach their full potential. Consistent with these aims, each agency must assess whether and to what extent its programs and policies perpetuate systemic barriers to opportunities and benefits for people of color and other underserved groups.
Yes, sir.
Such assessments.
Your time, your time is up. Can, can we add a, um, document for the record?
Okay, it's just one sentence? Can I just read that, finish that sentence?
Finish it.
Okay. Such assessment, assessments will better equip agencies to develop policies and programs that deliver resources and benefits equitable to all.
Thank you.
Thank you. I can provide a copy?
Yes, please. Okay. Anyone else? Please state your name, your address for the record, please. Guys, remember you have three minutes to do so. Please remember you got three minutes to do so.
Good evening. My name is Rosie Crawford. My address is ninety-two eighty-two Westview Drive, Covington, Georgia. Research shows that closing racial gaps in wealth, wages, homeownership, lending, and access to higher education would amount to an additional five trillion in GDP. The economics research that shows that racial inequality has caused the economy over sixteen trillion dollars in the past twenty years. How does the Newton County Board of Commissioner plan to allocate the ten million dollars it has already received from the American Rescue Plan? And how will you ensure it will be equitable distributed to black communities? I am continuing to read and, uh, paraphrase. Executive Order on Advancing Racial, Racial Equality and Support for Underserved Communities Through the Federal Government. Section two, definition A. The term equity means the consistent and systematic fair, just and impartial treatment of all individuals, including in visual, individuals who belong to underserved communities that have been denied such treatment, such as blacks and persons otherwise adversely affected by persistent poverty and inequality. B, the term undeserved community, refer to population. B, the term undeserved community refer to populations sharing a particular characteristic as well as geographic communities that have been systematically denied a full opportunity to participate in aspects of economic, social, and civil life. Further down in section eight, engagement with members of undeserved communities, the order specifies that it should be carried out by consulting the members and of communities that has been historically unrepresented and undeserved by or subject to discrimination. It states that opportunities should be made to increase coordination, communication, and engagement with community-based organizations and civil rights organizations. How has the Newton County Board of Commissioners engaged members of our undeserved community? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Guys, please state your name and your address for the record, please. Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Rodney J. Williams. I reside at three-one-five Meadmere Lane, Covington, Georgia. I'm continuing to read and paraphrase Executive Order on Advancing Racial Equality and Support for Undeserved Communities Throughout the Federal Government, section nine. Section nine, establishing an equitable data working group. Many federal databases are disaggregated, are not disaggregated by race, ethnicity, and that, and that's the gender, disability, income, veteran status, or other key democratic variables. This lack of data has cascading, affects, and impedes effort to measure and advance equality. A first step to promoting equality in government action is to gather the data necessary to inform that effort. What actions have the Newton County Board of Commissioners taken to gather data to access the needs of our communities? If you have not yet began this process, what is your timeline to get this accomplished? In closing, I'm gonna calm down a little bit now. We, the citizens of Newton County, are prepared to actively engage and support you in distributing funds to the black-owned businesses and nonprofits to facilitate improvements that would enhance job readiness. Training programs, STEM programs, after-school programs, address homelessness, mental health, and substance abuse, provide rental and utility bill assistance, food pantries, tutoring, support, and expand small businesses, and more. Please note that the money received through the American Rescue Plan thus far should not be allocated to fund infrastructure projects as there is a pending bill to address infrastructure needs. By advancing equity, we can create opportunities for the improvement of communities that have been historically underserved, which benefits everyone. In closing, we ask four questions. What are your plans with the ten million dollars Newton County has already received from the American Rescue Plan? Number two, how will you ensure it will be equitably distributed to black communities? Number three, how has the Newton County Board of Commissioners engaged members of our undeserved community? And finally, number four, most importantly, what actions have you taken to gather data to assist the needs of our communities? And you have not begun this process. What is your timeline to get this accomplished? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Please state your name and your address for the record, please. Good evening.
One second. My name is Rigels Fowal. I'm still thirty-eight, twenty-eight, Saint Laurent. I was there April nineteenth. Me and my children, I paid up my rent for five years. I stayed there for five years. I had a Mrs. D. friend. My landlord needed to, he sold all his property. He sold all his property. He asked me to move in February of this year. I could not go anywhere because I couldn't find anywhere to go with my children. Somebody had nowhere to go. He came for the eviction on me. And so I've been homeless ever since then. I stand in hotel pants for my own way. I've exhausted all my finances. I got a job. I got fired for no reason. I have no idea today why I got fired. I went to work every day. I was there before the manager got away from them to come open it. I've been to shelters. There's no room at the shelters. I'm just so hurt because of the situation. I just want to speak up and get some help for me and my children. Because this has been a really painful ordeal for me. And it really, really hurts because I've been doing everything I need to do, all my lights and everything is still on. I still have food. I lost everything. I lost everything. At least there it is now. And I used to go out my finances. Asking for help. I don't want anything. I just want help.
Thank you. Can you give me your name again, ma'am? Can you give me your name again? My name is Rigels Fowal. And can you please, um, wait for me after the, after the meeting? I would love to have, um, talk to you after the meeting, if you don't mind. Anyone else, please? Anyone else? Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'd like to reiterate, uh, reiterate, uh, to Brittany and Lloyd, my appreciation for the work you've done on the budget. Uh, a, a, one, almost a two-mil decrease in our millage rate is significant. I don't think I've ever seen that. I don't think I've ever seen that. So, um, hopefully that'll, that'll help offset. Lloyd, I believe I heard you say that, or Brittany, I believe I heard you say that's, that decrease outpaces what would have been the rollback rate. So we went beyond the rollback rate, um, uh, for this budget. So for that, I want to thank you. I know, um, I was a lot of pain in the, in the butt, but, uh, I appreciate your work with me. Thanks a lot, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I echo, uh, Commissioner Cow, I mean, I'm sorry, Commissioner Edwards. We all get each other's names a little around here. Um, I want to thank Brittany and Lloyd, um, for putting together, uh, that budget. I think, uh, moving from twelve point nine to, to eleven point one four five, uh, is a step in the right direction. Uh, we may not be exactly where we want to be, but I think if we continue to move in that direction, ultimately, we will be where we desire to be to be able to provide a level of relief, uh, to our constituents. And I think too, once again, uh, even as we continue to invest in economic development, uh, as I've stated since I've been on this board, uh, that will be one of the big things that will really help provide another level of relief. I think we did see that this year, uh, with Facebook giving us that two point six million dollars back. Uh, I think that's, uh, the beginning of what we're going to begin to see uh, as we continue to invest in economic development. Um, and so I want to say thank you, uh, Brittany and Lloyd, once again. Um, we did have a great movie in the park, uh, at Denny Dopp's Park on July the twenty-fourth. We had about fifty to seventy-five families that came out with vendors. I had a great time, uh, inviting everybody out to the next movie in the park on August the thirteenth. Uh, it's a Friday night. Uh, we're going to have our next movie in the park. We'll be watching Lion King. We'll have our vendors out again, uh, as well. They'll be there, our food vendors. And so we're looking for another amazing event there. Um, the splash pad and the skate park is being highly, highly utilized. And so we want to, uh, invite, uh, all of Newton County to come, utilize the splash pad. Uh, it is free, uh, to our community. There's no charge at this particular time. It's at Denny Dopp's Park as well. Uh, every single day I pass, I see it being highly, highly utilized. And so I'm excited to see that we're able to put some things in the community uh, where our youth, uh, really have something to participate in. Um, I also wanted to, uh, end conclusion with, uh, we are still looking for additional volunteers for the new, uh, countywide cleanup Newton project. Uh, we know we did have a waste issue in our county, and so we want to help address that. And so, um, I have brought on a partner. Uh, and with this partner, what we're doing is we're working, uh, throughout the county. We had our first cleanup, uh, last month. Uh, we're going to do our best to do this at least once a month, if not twice a month. Um, and so we're looking for volunteers all around the county uh, to kind of pitch in and help us come together, unify ourselves together on this one common goal, uh, to really help keep, uh, our community beautiful and keep our community clean uh, by incorporating the new, uh, Newton Cleanup Project. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Sanders?
Just wanted to, uh, reiterate the Newton Community Workout Series. It's going very well. We had, um, cycling last week and dance fitness last, last, last month, I'm sorry, last month. And if you enjoy jumping on trampolines while you were a kid, you could come out on August fourteenth for body jump fitness where you have your own individual trampoline and we're working out, jumping on that, on the trampoline. It's an action fitness workout. So go to commissionerstandards.com and register for your trampoline because they only bring a certain amount. So if you want to feel like a kid and work out at the same time, reserve your trampoline on that day. All right? So August twenty-eighth is cycling. Again, they have two classes for cycling, so make sure you reserve your cycling bike. And the Newton County Ladies Retreat is August twenty-first, so make sure you go and RSVP for that. Um, I'm excited because I had a major, uh, corporation I partnered with over the summer, last summer, to give away free vests. Who contacted you today to give items to those youth that's coming today. They're going to have a huge gift package. So make sure you RSVP for that and follow my comments, Mr. Sanders.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, man, I used to be good with a trampoline. I don't know about now, but I used to, uh, I used to, uh, Commissioner Henderson.
No, that's right. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I, I just want to just, just mention, mention something that may be, um, important to some people, may not be important to some people. I know for a fact that there's going to be, at least from the paper, I think, of the news, uh, your cover news said that if the housing project, there are going to be thirty families, women's and children. Place put out those because, uh, they, they don't have the money for whatever reason. Pay their bills or maybe went up somehow or another. And all this, uh, American Rescue Plan funds is available and we're not even talking about it. It's not right. I say it. Don't care who hear me. It's not right. We should be talking about it. We should be wanting to help our folks who are outside. We should be wanting to help the shelter. We should be wanting to help people behind their mortgages and whatever else until we spend that ten million dollars on the people, especially people who need it. And we're not. And it hurts me when I go to the housing and say, well, you're just nosing around. Well, if I don't go out and try to help the folks who, who need help, who else? Because we see that nobody else. We see that we have money. Nobody is trying to help. We know that the city of Kearney's got, uh, what, three million dollars in the bank? And guess what they're doing? They're setting up and they're having meetings and they're figuring out ways to spend that money. You know, the cap county got money and what they're doing is figuring out how to pay people bills. And they said, the reason why we ain't spent a whole lot of it is because we had somebody hack our computers and they're down. But we don't have that excuse. What is the excuse that we have if we won't help somebody who need help? It used to be a thing called love. You know, you say, love our neighbors? There's no love when you won't help your neighbor. You know, they're in help. And my heart goes out to the young lady who's, you know, sitting out there who needs help and we, we're not giving her help. So, you know, and put it back to one last comment about taxes, forty thirty-three dollars. I don't care how you slice it and dice it. There's no money. I don't care what you say. Well, we're going to say this. Yeah. If you put all a little bit of money, uh, together, people are suffering. People losing their homes. People can't pay their taxes. And we, we, we're having a big party saying that we're doing so much. I don't see it. And maybe, maybe I'm looking at the wrong figures. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cow.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Lloyd, Brittany, thank you for doing a good job on the budget. And, uh, I am impressed that we're able to roll the millage down that low. Uh, even though in Commissioner Henderson's view, it's not a significant amount of savings, it is. It's, uh, it is.
Come on, guys. Just make, make your comments.
It is. And, uh, it's a, it's a roll down in the tax rate for what it costs people. Um, we're heading in the right direction, so I appreciate what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, Lloyd and Brittany, uh, Brittany left, I think, but she's still here. Thank you so much, um, for, um, all the hard work you guys have done in this budget. Uh, I know you had a task to do and, uh, came with a budget and had to go back and do another budget. Had to go back and do another budget, so, uh, we greatly appreciate it. I know it's been tough, been a tough, um, several, several months, uh, but you guys stuck with it and got it done, and I greatly appreciate it. Um, I too am happy, um, that we are able to, um, actually roll the millage rate back. That's, that's amazing. Um, and then even more than that, almost a two-mil, um, decrease, that is, that's unheard of. Um, so I am thankful. Uh, thank you guys for all the hard work again. Um, also, guys, I, I am having a, um, a bookbag giveaway. I'm going to be giving away computer laptops and things like that for the kids, um, Saturday, um, right there at Lem eighty-two Washington Street. If you're not doing anything, please bring the kids by. Um, please try to get them a, um, laptop. Uh, we would love, love to see you there. Um, if there's nothing else, I seek emotion that we adjourn. All in favor?